Okay, we'll get started in about one minute. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon and welcome to the September 23rd, 2025 Special City Council Meeting. And I will ask everyone to please rise for the Canadian National Anthem.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in our love us common. Car ton bra se porté les pays et il s'est porté la croix. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillants exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
You can be seated. We acknowledge that we are on traditional lands of the Treaty Four Territory, a treaty signed with thirty-five First Nations across southern Saskatchewan and parts of Alberta and Manitoba, and the original lands of the Cree, Soto, Dakota, Nakota, Lakota, and on the homeland of the Métis Nation. The city of Regina owes its strength and vibrancy to these lands and the diverse indigenous peoples whose ancestors' footsteps have marked this territory, as well as settlers from around the world who continue to be welcomed here and call Regina home. Some members of City Council and City Administration may be attending the meeting today through video conferencing. I would like to remind those who are attending through video conferencing of the following: Please ensure that your video camera and microphone are turned off, and when speaking, remember to unmute your microphone and enable your video camera. Some delegations may be attending the meeting today by teleconference to address City Council on various items on the agenda. Can I have someone move, sorry, move a motion to approve the agenda at the call of the chair with an adjustment to add the registered list of delegations? Council Radins, Secondar, Council Zikiniak, any opposed? And carried. Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to again provide a high-level overview of how the meeting will proceed today. Administration will give a presentation on item CM25-16 2026-2027 Preliminary Service Forecast General Capital. Once the presentation is complete, the registered list of delegations will address City Council, and members will be permitted to ask the delegations any questions they have, they may have for them. Council will then move the report to the floor, and Council members will be permitted their five-minute speaking time to debate and ask questions of Administration respecting the presentation and related report. The matter on the meeting agenda today is an informational report providing Council with the current budget service level forecasting information. I'd like to remind members of Council that the deliberations today provide members of Council with the opportunity to ask Administration questions and put forward a referral motion for additional information only in the event Administration indicate they are unable to provide a response to a question posed to them at the meeting today, and that any amendments members may wish to bring forward in relation to the 2026 budget, deliberations be brought forward in December during the consideration of the proposed 2026 budget. If a referral motion is brought forward at this meeting today directing Administration to report back on additional information, that Administration requires additional time to provide an answer, the clerk will put the referral motion on the screen and add the requested additional information as a line item to the motion to begin a running list, and this will provide other members, and this will provide an opportunity for members to add additional items to the referral motion if they wish. Once all members have spoken and the debate has closed, the vote on the referral motion will be called. A member may request a separate vote be taken on any of the items listed in the referral motion. If the referral motion is carried, Administration would prepare a supplemental report in response to the referral motion, and the report would be published on the same meeting agenda as the proposed 2026 budget report as supplemental report in November. Do any members of Council have any questions respecting this process? We should all be pros. Okay, so with that, we'll begin with the report from Administration respecting item CM25-16 2026-2027 Preliminary Service Forecast General Capital, and I will ask Darren Anderson, Chief Financial Officer, to start us off. Go ahead, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, through you, the mayor. Today is day four of our five-part series here in detailing out where we're at in the budgeting process and our forecasting process. Today truly is a day where you guys are going to be involved in the making of the sausage. In terms of capital, this is one of the most complex processes that we go through as a city when doing budgeting decisions. As you have seen in the report, you know, we are only partway through this process. We have a list of potential projects that are on our list for decisions to be made, and we're still developing and working through a process to identify which ones will quote-unquote "make the cut." We hope that you participate in this process so we can get your questions out and hopefully answer as many as possible. The process is going to be a little bit different because of the vast number of projects in this report. We're going to have my colleague, Mr. May, do a short PowerPoint presentation giving you an overview, and then Administration's portion will be done. We won't be running through every project on the list. It would just be too time-consuming. So once he is done, we will turn it back to the mayor and go to delegations. With that, I'll pass it over to Mr. May.
Mr. May, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Bucinski. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide members of City Council with a snapshot of the current list of proposed general capital investments for 2026 and 2027. This unfiltered and unprioritized list is representative of Administration's starting point when developing capital budgets in prior years. This is also an opportunity for City Council members to ask questions of subject matter experts from Administration who can provide additional information and context for the 2026-2027 general capital investments that have been proposed for consideration. In prior years, a Committee of Administration's Senior Leaders, known as the Capital Projects Advisory Committee, or CPAC for short, met to prioritize the list of proposed general capital investments that would be recommended to City Council for approval in the upcoming budget year. CPAC members created the prioritized list using their knowledge of Administration's various master plans, condition assessment data, availability of external funding, and Administration and Council's strategic plans. During its budget deliberations, City Council would ask questions and make amendments to the capital plan as Council felt was necessary. For the 2026-2027 budget cycle, Administration is currently working with Collier's project leaders on a refreshed prioritization methodology for the city's general capital investments. Using this methodology, Administration will provide a prioritized list of 2026-2027 general capital investments for Council's consideration in December. Administration and Collier's project leaders will also provide an overview of the prioritization methodology itself. As a result, the purpose of today's meeting is not to make decisions or prioritize the list, rather it is to provide Council with an opportunity to learn more about the general capital investments that have been identified by just Administration's subject matter experts. You've heard me refer or use the phrase "general capital" several times so far, and that refers to those capital programs and projects that are funded in whole or in part by an allocation of general revenue from the city's general operating budget. This allocation is known as current contribution to capital. On September 5th, Administration shared that the current contribution amount available for for civic capital investments is seventy-nine point seven million dollars in twenty-twenty-six and eighty-two point one million dollars in twenty-twenty-seven. I can share with you that in twenty-twenty-five, eight point five million dollars of that big pot of current contributions to capital was set aside for Regina Police Service capital. We've assumed the status quo. We don't know right now what Regina Police Service will need for capital. We're assuming it's the same as next year, so we've kind of taken that off the table for today's discussion. In addition, nine point seven five million dollars of that total is dedicated to recreation and cultural capital projects. So of that big pot, fifty-six point five five million, which is the first row you'll see in Appendix A, is available for civic capital investments. Of this total, in typically, we start out in a place where twelve million dollars is initially earmarked for residential roads. In prior years, this amount has been reduced to provide funding to other civic capital projects and programs. That would leave forty-four point five million dollars available to fund the remainder of general civic general capital program. The projects and programs in Appendix E are all vying for a portion of this fifty-six point five five million dollars. And to round out to the total of seventy-nine point seven million dollars, we have four point nine million dollars in funding that on the operating side, we assume would go straight to fund general capital projects, but in our capital database, uh, folks have identified, have, it's been mistakenly coded as debt, so that's a miss on our part. As we do not draw on current contributions as a funding source, utility capital projects will not be covered in today's meeting. The twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven forecast for utility operations and utility capital will be discussed at the October third, twenty-twenty-five Special City Council meeting. The appendices to today's report outline the following: Appendix A shows the various sources of funds used to invest in general capital programs and projects, and highlights the gap between the available funds of one hundred eighty-five point five million and the recommended capital investments of two hundred and forty-four million. Appendix B shows the, those projects that are primarily funded by reserves and demand very little in the way of funding from current contribution. Appendix C highlights the programs and projects in the Recreation Culture Capital Plan. The nine point seven five million dollars in current contribution used to fund this plan was established through the allocation of cost savings found during the twenty-nineteen Management Review and a dedicated mill rate that was put in place for five years. Given that these programs and projects have their own Council-approved source of funding, Administration typically does not debate the prioritization of these programs and projects alongside the rest of the general capital investments. Appendix D highlights the indoor aquatic facility and the associated geothermal heating facility. City Council has approved the total cost and the funding sources for the IAF project, so we've removed them from the list of the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven general capital investments that need to be prioritized. Appendix E highlights the remaining programs and projects recommended for investment in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven. It is these programs and projects that are vying for the fifty-six point five five million in current contributions I spoke of earlier. In conclusion, Administration will continue to work with Collier's project leaders on a refreshed prioritization methodology for the city's general capital investments, and will provide a prioritized list of twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven general capital investments for Council's consideration in December. The balance of today's meeting is to provide Council with an opportunity to learn more about the general capital investments that have been identified by Administration's subject matter experts. Hopefully, the information provided during today's meeting will help inform Council's decision-making during December when it reviews and approves or amends the prioritized list of twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven general capital investments provided by Administration. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
Okay, thank you for, uh, the presentation. So with that, we will, uh, go straight into, uh, delegations. So first, I'd like to call up, uh, delegation DE twenty-five dash one seven seven, Ellen McLaughlin. And once you're seated there, I'll get you to introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, uh, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address City Council, after which you will have the opportunity to respond to any questions City Council may have for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Perfect, thank you, mayor. Uh, my name is Ellen McLaughlin. I represent Bike Regina, and I live in Regina Ward Three. Um, so hello, council. Beyond speaking to you as just Bike Regina, I do just want to note a bit of background for myself. I am also a transportation engineer by trade, uh, so what I say carries not just the weight of, uh, an interested community member, but when I'm talking about active transportation, please know that this is also my specialized field of practice as a profession. So Bike Regina respectfully urges this council to increase the City of Regina's annual investment in active transportation infrastructure from the previous year's one million dollars to the four million dollars requested in the TNP update received by council earlier this year. And I do recognize that everything vying for budget is an important task, uh, but the request we're making is that you can do a lot with a fairly small amount of dollars, uh, dedicated to active transportation. Uh, this increase is not just a matter of more bike lanes or sidewalks, an investment in a safer, healthier, more vibrant, and economically sound future in our city. Regina is theoretically a excellent cycling city. Uh, it's relatively flat, has a relatively small footprint compared to other locations, but our lack of investment in a complete and connected cycling network means that we have a very small uptake in commuter cycling in our city compared to other places like Finland, Winnipeg, Edmonton, and even cities in Alaska that have dedicated more of their funding to active transportation compared to other modes of travel. Uh, and winter is only a barrier if we decide it is. The same way that driving to work in the winter is not a problem because we clear roadways and because we have connected roadways, cycling in the winter would also not be a problem if we had a connected cycling network and cleared that cycling network in the winter. Winter and weather truly not, uh, not a barrier. Uh, so first, I want to talk about our financial investment, and if we get time, uh, I do also have some points about safety and climate action, but we'll start with financials. Uh, so this, uh, you know, good policy should be good financial stewardship. Studies across North America have shown that every dollar invested in active transportation returns three to eleven dollars in long-term economic benefits. These include reduced wear and tear on our roadways, uh, which result in less maintenance costs, reduced congestion and extended life expectancy of those existing roadways. That means we can delay how long it takes to add traffic signals at an intersection, widen from two to four lanes, or build turning lanes, other cost savings. This also results in increased local business. Studies throughout Canada have shown that cyclists and pedestrians stop more often to buy local goods than people in cars. I can window shop as a pedestrian and cyclist, I can't window shop in a vehicle. Uh, this also results in lower public health costs through increased physical activity and mental well-being, and the burden placed on our healthcare system is, uh, a cost covered by us all. Uh, it also has been shown to increase property value adjacent to and within about a four-hundred to eight-hundred meter radius of bike lanes, and it is honestly a reduced burden on personal finances. If I were to buy a new bike, all the bells and whistles, and helmets, lights, and there was an increased mill rate of the three million dollars needed to meet this difference, that would be about ten thousand dollars less than the fin, the financing of a car, license and registration, and annual gas costs, and no increase in the mill rate. Ten thousand dollars. Every, even conservative estimates show that adding or improving cycling infrastructure costs a fraction of what it would spend on road expansion and repairs. For context, a single kilometer of urban road costs anywhere between two to five million dollars. I don't have the exact numbers for Regina because, uh, I'm not on the inside of the project expenses. Um, but for that same amount, we can build a comprehensive network of protected bike lanes, which is a critical factor in increasing cycling numbers. We must have a complete and connected network instead of one or two bike lanes that are not connected and do not get you from your destination and your origin.
Well, thirty seconds left.
Okay. A brief touch on safety. Uh, in twenty-twenty-three, which is the most recently publicly available traffic accident and information system, dataset publicly available, Regina saw a hundred and thirty collisions involving pedestrians and cyclists and five fatalities. Those five fatalities were the only fatalities the city saw. A hundred percent of fatalities in our city were pedestrians and cyclists. According to our Vision Zero strategy of reducing cyclists, or reducing serious injuries and deaths, the priority should be on reducing, uh, cyclist and pedestrian deaths to meet those goals. Do I have any more time?
Uh, no, you're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll go to, uh, councillors with questions. Councilor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, Ellen, thanks so much for, for all those great insights. Um, first, I'm curious, uh, if you could elaborate more on the safety that you didn't get a chance to, to finish on, just to touch more on, um, what other insights you can offer on that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Flores. Um, so by prioritizing motor vehicles, uh, that often comes at the expense of safety for cyclists and pedestrians. Given that a hundred percent of fatalities were pedestrian cyclist fatalities this year, uh, it does point to a gap, uh, in our system. Uh, City of Regina did formally adopt the Vision Zero strategy in twenty-twenty-four. For anyone unfamiliar with the Vision Zero strategy, its ultimate goal is eliminating serious injuries and fatalities on our roadways, uh, but in the interim, the next five years, our goal is to reduce fatalities and serious injuries by ten percent. So when prioritizing our decisions, we should be following the guiding policies we as a city and we as council have adopted. And the lack of connected protected bike lanes and paths forces cyclists to shut the roads with heavy traffic, exposing them to potential collisions, frustrating drivers, and deterring, uh, people that are curious or scared to bike from even trying to bike to work.
How would you address any concerns of, uh, through the chair, of folks who, uh, feel that this might be an either-or? Like, we're a car city, so it, that's just where we are, um, as opposed to, uh, perhaps looking at both options as something that, uh, could make our city more vibrant?
Two points to that. Um, building bike lanes doesn't mean you have to stop driving. It just means that there is a safe option to do so, and we have built ourselves into being a car city. We used to be a tram city. So we move with the infrastructure that is available to us. If there aren't buses, then we can't go by bus. If there aren't sidewalks, then it's really hard to walk. If there aren't roads, we wouldn't be driving. So we move with the infrastructure that's provided.
And one more question. Uh, you mentioned that, uh, there is also an environmental impact to this. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that, please?
Uh, yes, let's see. Um, so biking produces about ninety percent fewer, um, emissions than driving, and that is usually like the cost of actually producing the bike itself, shipping it to the, the place where you live, et cetera. Um, so a single person switching from a car to a bike for an annual commute reduces their carbon footprint by about one ton of CO2. Um, and encouraging mode shift, as we said before, doesn't mean that everyone has to give up a car, it just gives you the opportunity to make a choice.
All right. Thank you so much, that's all for me.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for being here and your presentation. Um, I did want to ask you some questions about bike safety. Um, so in Regina, we don't have any bike helmet laws, um, and obviously that's the best thing you can do to be safe on a bike, so I was wondering what your opinion is on that for maybe everybody or maybe under eighteen, or would that not be something to look into for safety?
Uh, this is actually a really fascinating question, um, and a bit of, uh, it doesn't follow intuition. So studies have shown that wearing a bike helmet does protect the bike rider, but bike legislation requiring bike helmet use does not increase bike helmet use. Uh, and it actually usually just imposes a financial burden on low-income communities preventing initial cycling. So the biggest things to increase cyclist's safety is protected infrastructure where I'm less likely to be hit by a vehicle, period. And then cycling in numbers, where drivers, when they're coming to an intersection, may expect to see a cyclist rather than forgetting they exist and making a right hand turn without shoulder checking. And if, I know, uh, the mayor on council and there are some other engineers that may be familiar with this, but the, there is a, uh, a pyramid of safety controls on a hazardous work site. Um, the first line of defense is like administration controls and engineering controls by removing or controlling the safety hazard, and the very last line of defense is PPE. So if I can prevent something from falling my head, great, but if something's going to fall on my head, I may as well have a hard hat on. In the very same way, the first line of defense should be engineering and removing the conflict. And the very last line of defense, a helmet helps. Um, so we do encourage bike helmet use, but bike legislation that requires helmet use, counterintuitively, doesn't actually produce the results we want.
What about for, for children? Like, there's car seats and seatbelt laws, which would be also similar for safety, and so like, I understand if you're over eighteen and freedom to choice and all of that, but children and helmet laws, would that not be something to teach society to be safer when we're talking about reducing these fatal, fatalities?
Uh, again, we do recommend that children wear helmets, um, but the evidence does show that it doesn't actually increase helmet use.
Okay, I will leave that one there. Um, another safety question I want to ask you about is, um, I think the stop-as-yield law? I believe that is used in Idaho or whatever, where bike cyclists are allowed to use stop signs as yields, which helps take them off of main streets. Um, is that something you have opinion on?
Uh, yes, the Idaho stop, uh, as you've identified, is the stop-as-yield, where cyclists can treat a stop sign as a yield sign. This kind of identifies the, uh, perception-reaction time differences between drivers and cyclists, so drivers are usually traveling much faster than cyclists, and it takes about, uh, let's say, three seconds to identify a conflict, come to a stop, and then make a decision. Drivers go a lot further in three seconds than a cyclist does, and so the idea is that drivers must come to a complete stop to actually have those three seconds to identify conflicts, whereas cyclists, because they're going slower, can identify, typically, can identify conflicts while making a yield rather than a full stop, and still making that identification safely.
And I'm going to move on to my last one. I don't want to get into too much conversations on something unrelated to budget, so I'll just move on to my last question. I'm just asking, well, this is about safety and, and bicycles and what we can do maybe outside of the budget, so I just wanted to ask your opinion on, uh, electric bikes, um, and with the speed on that.
Electric bikes, um, speed should probably be regulated, um, or governed, especially if they're sharing multi-pathways or bike lanes where, you know, a roller skater, a skateboarder, and a cyclist may only reasonably get up to like thirty, forty kilometers an hour on their own. So regulating speeds to around thirty or forty kilometers an hour, uh, on like a high commute bike corridor would be reasonable. One of the biggest dangers in collisions is speed differentials, and so we want to limit the difference in speed between two colliding objects. Speed governors on any vehicle is kind of a larger topic of discussion, like we could introduce speed governors on trucks and cars, um, to reduce speeding on our local roads as well.
Thank you. I just wanted to maybe see if there are some other things we could do outside of the budget to help, which is why I asked those safety questions, but I'll let someone else ask questions now, too.
Thank you. Uh, I respect where you're coming from, but we do need to stick to budget questions from now on. Uh, Councilor Burton, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. Uh, as you're coming forward and asking for us to spend on this, can you describe, do you have any information on how many people bike downtown on a daily basis?
I don't have that data, but I would direct you back to your city administration, who does generally have origin destination data and traffic count data.
And so that would mean you wouldn't have any information about how many people bike downtown in the winter as well?
Presumably, but people... Presumably, but people tend to collect data in just the summer when they're looking at active transportation, so it's kind of a gap in our data collection process.
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, another delegation a few weeks ago suggested that we need to install separated bike lanes on Elephant Stone Street and on the Wasana Parkway. Is that a priority for you as to some of the activities or areas that need targeting as we look at where we spend the money?
I would prioritize bike lanes based on equity. So communities that rely on bikes much heavier, a safe way to get north-south across the railroad tracks might be a priority for me, or a parallel route, parallel to Dugni Avenue.
Thank you. Okay. Just as we're, as we are talking about where we spend, I'm just a little astounded at when you suggest that we do need to spend, I'm going to say millions, to provide the separation that you desire, and that does improve safety here. But you suggest the city should spend this money, but people shouldn't spend money on a helmet, and you can get helmets used in many places at a pretty reasonable cost. So I just, I'm asking about the priority of, of the city spending on that rather than people spending on some themselves.
Okay, so if we raise the mill rate by 1%, which would be the 3 million difference, that's about $30 to me personally. A helmet, a good helmet, is almost $200, and you probably shouldn't buy a used helmet because similar to car seats, they do expire after a single impact, you need to get a new helmet.
Okay, I'll let it go there. I've found helmets for much cheaper, so thank you.
councillor Fro, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, Ellen, thanks for coming today. Just given the limitations on time and given that we're talking about budget, one of the things you mentioned was an ROI as it relates to active transportation. So the gearing ratio, if you will, of a dollar spent on active transportation to money saved. I believe you referenced several Canadian cities, maybe Edmonton and Winnipeg. And so I'm wondering if you could expand on that, if you can, within a Canadian context or perhaps what you've seen in your professional life, in terms of practical examples that we may be dealing with today as it relates to capital discussion and how, and how active transportation may in fact give us some sort of fiscal flexibility in, in other areas. That was something that piqued my interest.
Yeah. There are a couple ways we can go about it. There is the flexible approach to actually building active transportation. So for example, Edmonton prioritized a temporary and pilot project network, so they built out their entire downtown network in a couple of years using temporary measures such as flexible polyposts, movable curb barriers, and other traffic calling measures to almost instantly have a connected bike network that got you from where you needed to go to where you live. And because it was actually complete, they found that the usership immediately started increasing on these temporary bike lanes. And then as those streets went for renewal, went for repaving, et cetera, those temporary measures were made permanent. And so that allowed for some flexibility of like instantaneous results and saw that it was used. It allowed for some flexibility to, you know, maybe we need accessible loading zones here, and maybe this is a better protected bike lane or a neighborhood bike lane or advisory bike lane, different levels of protection for the cycling infrastructure. So it allowed them to trial types of infrastructure and other aspects and actually be very responsive. So that's one way to be flexible with a budget. The other way is, as identified, if you can remove cars from the roadway by creating bike trips, you increase capacity on those existing roadways. A thing that we love to forget is when I'm driving, I am congestion. So if I'm not driving, I'm not on the roadway, and I'm off to a side in a bike lane, then I am not creating congestion. And there is a critical mass of cyclists where we start to reduce the number of vehicles on the roadway, and we can start to get more longevity out of the roads we have before needing to twind them, which is very costly.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions, so thank you for your presentation today. You can return to the gallery.
Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like to call upon delegation D 25-178, Jim Elliott. Good day, Mr. Elliott. So I'll get you to do the similar, similar spiel here. Introduce yourself for the record, the organization you're representing, if any, today, what city or town you reside in. You'll have five minutes to address council, after which you'll have the opportunity to respond to any questions for you. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. My name is Jim Elliott. I live in Regina, and thank you for the chance to speak to this part of the, the budget. I guess I'll start by simply stating there's a number of projects that I feel should in fact be either scrapped or, or produced significantly just due to what I see is, is a long-term benefit and not much positive outlook for them. But I will say in a, in a general sense, and again, this comes up at the, at the kind of the, the high level, I don't believe and I don't think most cities in this country or, and in some cases the world are sustainable as they currently sit. Unfortunately, we've spent the last 40 or 50 years making it even less sustainable than they were. As, as the previous delegation pointed out, we did have trams. We also had electric vehicles back in the 1910s, and we switched everything over to fossil fuel. So I, I say that in the sense that I think if you're going to be moving into what I would consider a sustainable and perhaps even more directed word, an intentional sustainable community, then we need to be providing a lot more, both either incentives or disincentives to, to move in that direction. And, and again, I, I look at principally the, the way we're building our city. We're continuing to expand the physical footprint, which, as has been pointed out a number of times, that means more asphalt, more concrete, more congestion, more vehicles on the road. And, and the more we, we do that, the harder it becomes to, to go to a, a sustainable community. And I could say probably we could be putting the, the people that are currently, plan to be living in Cooper Town, actually in the inner-city Regina, and we could eliminate that, that aspect of both cost but also capital as well as long-term debt that we're going to need to be replacing with years. I guess the other thing which I'll, I want to point out, and this is, comes from some of the diagrams that I provided to you, if we were to be going to a sustainable and carbon-neutral city, as the intentions of the energy sustainability net framework is suggesting, we could be employing a lot more people, we could be doing a lot more with the money we have. So rather than spending, in the cases of the few projects that I suggested, 15 to 20 million dollars in capital expenses, we could be in fact employing, you know, that in, in people rather than necessarily concrete and asphalt, I guess, in, in many cases. I, I guess the other aspect of it too is, is it's, in a general sense, there's no incentive to do a lot of things. Like, right now, I'm paying for services that I don't use and will never use, and yet we're expected to pay them. And in fact, what I would almost consider subsidizing somebody else for, for their wasteful operations. I think we're doing the same thing in, in many cases with the automobiles. You look at how much energy is being used to get to places. We could be much more efficient with that and through incentives and courage, much, much fewer capital projects, as, as been outlined in the, in the report. And I guess at that point, I'll, I'll conclude and answer any of your questions about either what I've put in the brief or some of the comments I've made, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Elliott. Okay, I'll check with my colleagues if anybody has any questions. Okay, I don't see any questions for you today, Mr. Elliott, so thanks for your presentation. You can return to the gallery.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, we will now consider items CM 25-16, 2026, 2027 preliminary service forecast, general capital. Can I have someone move the report? councillor Burton, and a second. councillor Flores. And councillor Burton, would you like to start us off here? Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, I guess I'll start first through the chair, start first with just the bicycle stuff that was discussed in there, because there is bike lanes listed at roughly half a million dollars per year. And my question to the administration is, is, is there any proportion of this that goes towards street separation versus creation of new bike paths through areas where there was not passable before, like, you know, crossing Elephant Stone or at the tracks or various things like that? So just looking to understand the, the spend there on bike lanes.
Ms. Brydon, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for that question. Through the chair. So we're continuing to work on completing our cross-town route with the next section to be completed along College Avenue between Broad and Winnipeg. And so because that project is larger than our annual allotment for bike lanes, we have to use some carry forward. So some of the funding is being carried forward so we can complete that project. And so that work is expected to occur 2027 construction.
And sorry, is that on-street bike lane separation or a new lane to the side? That was key to my.
Thank you. Through the chair, I will refer that to Ms. Sagan to speak specifically on the construction.
Thank you, that's a key to my question, thank you.
Ms. Sagan, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, that particular one is an off-street location, so we're looking to create a pathway off the road similar to what is already between College and Albert Street, so it's a continuation of a pathway that was built a couple of years ago.
Thank you. And so just as we're prioritizing our spend here, I, I very much understand the delegation's discussion about separation and safety and just some of the suggestions that have been made in other presentations about creating separate bike lanes on existing roads that then complicate snow clearing seem to be very excessively expensive to spend. I'd just like to get your ideas on the general spend or architecture that you have to spend this money and as you take that forward.
Ms. Sagan? Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Through the mayor. When we're retrofitting bike lanes into existing road right-of-ways, it does get challenging always to find off-street solutions for bike lanes. Those are preferred from a safety concern, as you had heard from the delegation. But we have piloted and constructed both painted online or on-street bike lanes. We've done roads where there's a shared space for vehicles and cyclists as well. We are currently working on a complete street framework as well, and what that will do for us is give us guidelines or give us some guidance on how to retrofit or how to build new streets so that we can accommodate more modes of transportation and do it in a safe way, but also do it in a way that we understand the maintenance requirements for it and, and how to take care of it in the, in the long term.
Thank you very much. That, that helps. And just as you do that architecture, I will have input in the future to discuss doing what Vancouver and Ottawa do to avoid the main streets, to have the buses and cars on the main streets and separate the traffic onto side streets, so I enjoy that. Next question through the chair to the administration is the, the facility upgrades to support bus electrification. It shows some carryover from 2025 and then nothing in the next couple of years. That I understand means that there will be some activity or money that is taken in 2026. As we debate in the future about the progression of buses, my question is, is this 4.12 million on line? Item 31, J 1264, is that cover just the, all the buses that we purchased in 2025 and 2026, or does that account for additional buses we may or may not purchase in '26 and '27 or, or in other years?
Sorry, Mr. Doni, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, through the mayor, that funding identified is for the project that's currently underway, and it is work that is underway to support the charging for the, the new electric buses. It's committed funding that will be spent, I think, in early, early next year, and will wrap up this initial phase of work.
Through the chair, but my, my question is, does that just support that initial complement of eight and 12 or potential future buses beyond that? I believe it was eight and 12, I could be wrong.
Sorry, through the mayor, this initial phase will allow for the charging of up to 60 buses.
So my question is, because there is perhaps some doubt in the purchase of additional buses, could there be some savings by not completing that in the next year and scaling that back?
Through the mayor, this, this contract is currently in progress, and we'd have to look into the potential implications of pausing a, a portion of it, but most of that equipment is on-site. It's just a matter of getting it installed at this point.
I think Mr. Doni was going to comment as well for you.
Through, through the chair. In addition, this work is part of the zero emission fund grant that came from the federal government, so they provided us $52 million to purchase buses and electric infrastructure, and so that is the money that we're receiving in the past and part of this going forward.
Thank you for that clarification through the chair. Give me a second here. Item, through the chair, item 75, the ceremonial, ceremonial site there, which is for the indoor sweat, sweat lodge. Just confirming that that shows, where am I here? 6.8 million and then 2.82 million? That, that is the cost for the full facility, that much?
Ms. Brydon, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, that is the estimated cost for that facility.
And I'd like to get, I don't know the details of that. I would like to understand and get, I guess, a motion. I don't want to debate here or discuss it, but I'd add a motion here to just get some of the details of the sweat lodge. I've committed to residents about libraries and pools to not, you know, to keep it econom- as econom- as economized as possible, and I'd like to just understand that as well.
Okay, just give us one second, we'll get something written up for the, to review. Ms. Lowe, do you want to speak to that? Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good morning or good afternoon. Through the chair, so the ceremony site is still, it's in RFP process. We're trying to put together the plan to be able to go to RFP to identify all of the pieces that need to go into the ceremony site. We've been working with the others Advisory Committee for two years to build out the current site, but we need something to be able to operate year-round, as ceremony just doesn't happen in the summer. And so we are looking at what that facility could look like, the types- in the summer. And so, we are looking at what that facility could look like, the types of sweats and other ceremony night lodges and other things that could happen there that helps promote Indigenous cultural revitalization for our city, but also provides a space for healing for any residents and all community members, as everyone is welcome to participate in that as well.
So, yes, thank you through the chair. Yes, I would like to still proceed to understand and get an understanding of the costs involved and what, what the facility will provide.
Okay. Just give us one second. We'll get that written up. So, Counselor Burton, just get you to read that and then I'll go to administration to weigh in as well.
So, I move that the, that the city, the administration provide additional information on the ceremonial site, being, just the information on the ceremonial site and various uses and costs and benefits of the site. Sure. Overview of the uses. Information on the ceremonial site, overview of the various uses and the costs and benefits.
Counselor Burton, I think just double-check that?
Yep.
Okay. I'll just ask administration if anybody wants to weigh in on this, just to make sure this looks okay. Go ahead, Mr. Nickel.
Through you, mayor. I mean, yes, we can pull this information together. I mean, it is included in the Park's master plan, what the site is, et cetera. And with that, maybe Ms. Bryden or one of her staff could just explain to members of, or remind members of council what's in the Park's master, or the rec plan on this.
Ms. Bryden or do you have someone else that wants to speak to it? Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, I'll start and then Ms. Low might want to add. So, the Park's master plan that was adopted by council last July, I think, one of the pieces, recommendations within that plan was to create a ceremonial site. And then council approved that ceremonial site in, I think, the same month. And really, the benefits are in relation to many things within the community. And again, I could ask Ms. Low to speak to that more specifically, if she's still on the line.
Ms. Low? Are you there still?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Thank you. So, the benefits to community are far and wide. Right now, the only ceremony site within the vicinity of Regina is White Raven and Fort Capel, and they're overbooked. They have sweats and other ceremony regularly. And there's just so much need for that medicine and that healing within community in Regina. And so, our elders advisory have worked really hard to provide those sweats, the sweats particularly, although that's not the only ceremony and definitely not the only use for the potential of the site. But the, the sweats, like this year, for example, council has been invited, administration and community sweats have happened. There's been 15 out at the site. Most of them, well, all of them very well received by the people who were there, able to go and learn and heal from those sessions. And that it was only limited by the amount of, amount of time that the elders could provide and the amount of money that it costs for the wood and the rocks and the honorariums for the elders and other things. So, we haven't even really, because the site's only been operational for two years, we haven't even really explored the opportunity of what it really could be. And so, last night, we had an elders advisory meeting where we briefly touched on what the ceremony site could and should become, including the potential for what the site could be, what the permanent structure on the site could be or could look like with a sweat lodge ceremony and change rooms and cultural teaching space and some land-based learning. And there's a lot of opportunity there for discussions still around what that could be as we're just going to RFP, through the RFP process right now to hire an architect to see what it could look like. But this is something that's really unique to our city. There's not a lot of municipalities doing anything like this. And it is a place for a community to come and gather, build relationships, heal and grow and just learn more about the Indigenous cultural perspective in our city.
Thank you. Through the chair, I 100% support the lodge being built. The questions are more around how do our costs compare to Fort Capel? Is this capital outlay typical for a sweat lodge? You know, as we did our approval for the facility in July, did we do it up to this level of 6 million and stuff? That's where I'm looking for more clarification. So, don't need any more discussion on that, but...
Well, I think that's a fair point, Counselor Burton. So, does that provide context where counselor's coming from? Mr. Nickel, go ahead.
Thank you, mayor. As Ms. Low mentioned, this was discussed last evening with the elders advisory council. And I will ask Ms. Low to further elaborate on this, if she can, with respect to the comparison of costs. But one of the things that was mentioned last night repeatedly was that with the significant number of various First Nations that are calling Regina home, they don't necessarily have a nearby ceremonial site, for example, to go to a sweat. They would have to go out of the city. And it's, and I think it's well, it's well reasoned that that is prohibitive to many people. And it sort of takes away from the fact of what we're trying to do with reconciliation and bring these nations together because they want a site where they call home as well. And so, that's part of, you know, that intangible cost benefit in my mind. But if Ms. Low can just expand a little bit on how we have compared, I think perhaps Edmonton was used as a comparator last night.
Go ahead, Ms. Low.
Yeah. So, I'll start with Fort Capel because it's close. And while it's not municipal, not a municipal-run site, it is incredibly small. And I think there are lots of lessons to be learned there. But my understanding, I think, administration did some research on this in Deb's area. But from what I recall from Janine saying last night, that site was built nearly 20 years ago for about $400,000. And it's too small and it doesn't fit the needs. So, with the cost of inflation, I, I mean, I'm not a mathematician, so I have no idea what that looks like in today's terms. But I do know that we, there, it's, it's way too small. And most of the residents, or most of the people that go out to White Raven, as I said, they're completely overrun with their programming and there's not enough space. 60% of those residents or 60% of those participants are from Regina, too. So, there's just not enough space out there. With respect to Edmonton, it's run by a nonprofit organization. And I don't know the entire details of how or why or where it was built. But I know that Edmonton is really far down the road of reconciliation and making this possible for their residents to access their culture and space. And it is, they have certainly been an inspiration for us as we've developed the Indigenous framework and set on the path of reconciliation for Regina.
Okay. So, Counselor Burton, I guess, I think administration's trying to answer, I think, your questions. But if, I'll just go back to you. If you feel like there's still more information, we could...
Yep.
Okay. Okay. What's your point of clarification? Go ahead.
My question is, because administration said they were just now issuing the RFP, my interpretation of what Counselor Burton is asking for is lots of detailed information about, you know, the cost benefit and, and what is planned for the site. Do we have that level of information to, to respond to, unless I misunderstand, like you want a detailed analysis? Is this the best you...
Still high level, but what are the major components of the facility and the high-level expenditures that would be required and what capabilities, rooms, capacities would be in the...
And so, my question is just like, do we actually have that information at this time?
Yeah. So, I guess, yeah, that, that's a fair question is, would this information be available in time for budget deliberations? Go ahead, Mr. Nickel.
Thank you. I, I can't speak to whether we would be able to provide a lot of detailed information. But I think that we could at least, if what Counselor Burton is looking for, we could give him some high ra, or some range of what it would be. And in that report, we could also explain, as Ms. Low did for, for members of the public and for additional scrutiny at that time, what Fort Capel looks like, the number of visits, what we are looking at here in terms of First Nations residents in Regina who would want to go to something in their backyard, so to speak. We can talk about how, what Edmonton does and at least give you a parameter from the information we might be able to gather, what is the cost of Edmonton in terms of capital and operating. So, I'm not sure that we would have any RFP-related information, but I think we can give a, at least an appropriate 30,000-foot level look at this.
That would be fine.
Okay. Sorry. Point of clarification, Counselor Manzonielli?
I do. It will take me a second to kind of explain my viewpoint on the clarity I need. Can I go?
For, for this, you're saying?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, my clarity comes from the process we're engaged in for this budget. Last meeting, there was a, a motion approved for administration to come back with different price points, basically, 5%, 9%. And you guys are going to go back and aggregate the numbers and figure out how that's going. When I look at what's being discussed before me and asked for, for information from administration, I, I feel this project's well-vetted and in good hands for the use, the size and comparison. My feeling is, this is an administration job that maybe this isn't a two-year spend, maybe this is a four-year spend because of budgetary needs. We have control over this project because it's one of a kind, like other people aren't doing this, as pointed out, nothing else is going on. We have the RFP going out, so we have control over timelines. Like, those are all administration jobs to do behind the scenes to figure out how to make a budget swirl, so to say. I don't need to support this because I believe in the use of it. But if all of a sudden, the whole way of budgeting is changed and I have to actually work in what I just said to come back before us in budget time to see if that's one of the possibilities to get the spends under control, then I better get my amendment pen out and start going right now. Did I, did I make that clear?
No.
Okay. So, basically, I was wondering, this is a two-year plan right now. If I was administration doing my job, I'd be thinking, hey, could I make this a four-year plan, bring the cost down over four years instead of two years, make it fit the budget and come back with our 5% estimate or a 9% estimate? These would be one of the things I'd be doing. If administration's going to do that type of work and come back with that kind of a recommendation with one of the promised outcomes from the motion, I, I don't think I want to support this because I think that the information, everything else, well-vetted. If all of a sudden, we're going to have to reformat everything and I'm going to have to bring something like that, so we have to do the job that way this time, then I have to take a different frame on this motion. Is that clear?
Yeah. I think, I think it's not to reformat. I think it's just additional information for forming an opinion on, on this particular topic. So...
So, then I'd like a friendly amendment. I'd also like to know if this could be spread over a four-year spend instead of a two-year spend.
Okay. And I'll just, just make sure we're clear that this is capital that we're talking about, too, just so everybody's clear on that. So, sorry, I'm just going to go to the acting clerk for a sec.
I didn't want to start pining over multiple years. I think that's their job.
So, prior to doing that, Counselor Manzonielli, and that would be something that, when we go to your time, because that's like the, the amendment, it would be after the fact. That's not a point of clarification, but we'll come to you as a point to put that on the board. But we haven't even gotten a seconder for Counselor Burton to put the referral up on the board. So, that's okay. No, it's all good. We'll, I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you after. Just put your light back on and then we'll take care of that portion of it. And then you could have that question to Counselor Burton for that friendly amendment at, at that, at that time. Okay. I'm just going to check back in with Mr. Nickel. It sounded like Counselor Burton was okay with your explanation of what you'd put forward. So, just...
I was just, I, I can address what Counselor Manzonielli was raising now or I can wait till a potential amendment from him. All I wanted to say was, this is high-level information. Obviously, the decision that was made by council earlier this year for the, the building and the funding associated with the ceremonial site was at a point in time. And you've had now new information given to you. No one is suggesting that you change your mind or change the previous decision. But in the context of it, the budget information or the financial forecast information that you're receiving now is significantly different and puts a different take on this. So, respectfully, I'd say the ceremonial site and/or any other capital project that is not already well underway is up for grabs or discussion. It's as simple as that.
Okay. Thanks for that context. So... So, I'm going to look just so we can keep it going. So, Counselor Burton, you're good with that and the explanation? Is there anybody that would like to second Counselor Burton's referral on there? Okay, Counselor Turnbull in queue. Okay. Counselor Burton, it's back to you because you still have a minute 40 seconds if you have anything else.
Okay.
I would just remind members that put your light on if you have something to amend or change or speak to this or anything otherwise. And we'll go in sequence as usual.
Okay. Item 144, Wascana Parkway, Highway 1A Loop Ramp. It shows 6.29 carryover from this year, nothing for next year, and then 4.86 in 2027. Just don't see anything happening this year. Just want to see is all this can be spent in 2026. Just a bit of explanation around that budget item.
Who'd like to speak to that?
Oh.
Ms. Again, go ahead.
Through you, the mayor. The project had previously been planned to be executed earlier but was deferred due to the development charges funding, the state of the development charges funds. So, to manage that, the development charges expenditures, we have moved it out to 2027. we have moved it out to 2027 and the entire project will be built in 2027.
Okay, so no activity in 2026?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next one. Prince of Wales, from the railway tracks to Highway 46. When did that move inside the city, the Prince of Wales to Highway 46? Through the chair, sorry.
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Through the chair, I'm not sure when that became part of the city. I don't believe it was part of the 2013 annexation, I think it was prior to that, yes. So I can't, I can't speak to what year that was annexed into the city.
Okay, my question is, is, you know, we haven't done much of regional planning here and this is part of, you know, at the edge of the city and feeding various things. Do we ever work with our partners in the RMR, sure, or to Edenwald to say, as we're doing some of our improvements, can we share some of the costs for this as we do something like this? And maybe there's another one, when we scratch their back, they can scratch ours. Is there any opportunities as we do some of these things right at the edge of the city? It seems like Regina disproportionately bears the burden that once it's inside the city, it finally gets fixed, even though it's been festering for 20 years that people have complained about that road when it was in the RMR.
Thank you, through the chair. So we do have conversations with our rural partners on different projects. I do believe in some cases, you know, the RMs may be contributing to other projects, although not this one in particular. But we are continuing to maintain relationships and work with our rural partners, certainly on capital projects as they arise.
Through the chair, have they ever indicated they would help contribute to some things at the edge of the city?
Go, 15 seconds left.
Thanks through the chair. I'm actually, I'm not going to specifically say about where we're at in some of those conversations at this point in time, but I would indicate that I think there is some positive headway on some projects.
Last question here, I'm all about capital investment will result in ongoing savings and I note the new CRM system, item 132 there. Just wondering if that will actually net any savings to the city in resources, process, staff, other activity?
Who'd like to take that? Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, through the chair. The CRM was identified in the efficiency review. It was identified, though, as a foundational change, not necessarily a savings change. But it will hopefully provide some efficiencies, better processes, better tracking, and just ultimately a modernized CRM system. And I'm pleased to report that we did do the RFP earlier this year for that and we are just currently in finalizing a contract with a chosen vendor. And so we look to have some progress to report on that in early 2026.
Thank you very much, I'm done. I look forward to the automated snow collection information, I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Counsel Burton. I'm going to ask just a couple of questions myself. Mine are more around kind of the process just highlighted around the prioritization. So we've, just high level, do we have a sense of what factors will be considered through working with Colliers in terms of the prioritization, like what will be considered to help us create that list? Mr. May, go ahead.
One moment, please. Almost there. Okay, so high level in general, Colliers is looking at a criteria like required by legislation, strategic alignment and council-directed service area priorities or master plan priorities, balancing asset management with growth, availability of external funding, perhaps an additional criteria around risk management. This is something in an unsafe condition, we need to accelerate its investment. Using all of those criteria, then they'll have, we have developed a preliminary waiting scheme and how all that would work. So it's, at a very high level, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, and you'd said possibly risk, risk management or risk mitigation, is that...
Yes.
I would ask if that would be a priority to have it based, have risk based in there?
During our discussion, there was some back and forth about, well, is that already captured in required by legislation?
Gotcha, okay, thank you. And then just, can you speak to, because you said we're using Colliers, can you just speak to their experience in, you know, kind of the public realm municipal prioritization or capital prioritization as it relates to municipal or municipalities, sorry?
Yes, so Collier project, Colliers project leaders, this is their bailiwick, this is the kind of work that they do. On our current project team with them is a former City of Calgary council member as well as members of administration or previous members of administration from cities like Vancouver and other cities across Western Canada. So everyone has experience in the municipal realm and that sort of need for limited funding and needing to prioritize.
Perfect, thank you for that. Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Flores, go ahead.
Thank you, and this is just general, not on that amendment, correct?
Yeah, there's no amendments, sorry.
All right, perfect, thank you. Through the chair, thank you for all the work. Especially excited to see that there is dedicated funding for Vision Zero and active transportation. However, the plan seems to allocate about 12 times more funding to road renewal than to projects related to pedestrian and active safety and active transportation. Could you please elaborate on how does this spending ratio align with our goals in the transportation master plan and our commitment to providing safe transportation options for all residents?
I don't know who you're pointing to, Mr. Donie? Oh, Ms. Sagan, okay.
Through the mayor. That's a big question. I think the, I mean, what I'd start with is the spending is somewhat in alignment with the amount of infrastructure we have. And as infrastructure shifts, we might start to see a shift in that funding. One thing that we have put forward in this budget, starting in 2027, is pulling the portion of budget that goes towards concrete or more specifically sidewalks as a program budget on its own. What this will do will not only highlight what the spending is towards that type of infrastructure as opposed to seeing it all lumped in with the roads, so separate out to see it, but also it'll allow for some prioritization of sidewalks separate from doing the road construction or seeing, using it specifically for things like connectivity or accessibility, addressing accessibility issues. So that's something you'll see in the future. I don't know if I can comment on what the ratios are without doing a little bit more analysis.
All right. Okay, now in terms of our Vision Zero, I see the allocation that we have is 1.15 million. Looking at the plan that we've set out for Vision Zero, is that enough to achieve those goals?
Mr. Donie, go ahead.
Through the chair, I will start and then ask Mr. Warren to add and he may ask someone online to give a bit more information. So Vision Zero is a long-term plan, we've got a five-year plan in place and this is starting to build us up towards those goals. I would say improving safety between vehicles and pedestrians is a priority, but there's a limited amount of budget. So I'll just ask Mr. Warren to highlight what that Vision Zero budget in 2026 is looking to achieve and how far off from the overall plan, if any, we are based on what council approved.
Thank you, through the chair. So the Vision Zero framework was approved in 2024. And so the, you know, the plan is in its early stages of execution. When we brought that report forward initially, we had identified several different funding sources, whether it's through the Vision Zero capital project, whether it was through other capital projects that could help execute Vision Zero goals. And I think there was a few other different kinds of funds through, you know, grant programs that we had identified could fund, you know, I think, I can't remember the exact number, but probably around, you know, 75% of the plan, the count, you know, the plan countermeasures over the next five years. But we did identify that there is a funding gap to fully achieving that work and that would be something that, as we advanced through that plan and found some of those maybe larger ticket items that weren't fully funded to that program, we would be, you know, the goal would be to bring those back to council on an individual basis to find those gaps, find some funding sources for those gaps.
And do we know in terms of that funding gap, what would be the impact of not addressing those funding gaps given that we've set out this plan? Because it's a great plan, it's a really well-informed plan. So what's the impact of those, of not achieving those funding gaps?
Thank you, through the chairs. So, you know, obviously, if we, if we, if the gap remained in funding, then likely we wouldn't achieve all of the different countermeasures that we put forward in that five-year plan. As part of the work that we do internally to prioritize what work is going to be completed, also making sure that we're integrating with other, you know, capital projects and other projects throughout the city, we want to make sure that we're maximizing the use of those funds. Within the countermeasures, basically the action plan over the next five years, we've also basically used a ratio in terms of like a cost, sorry, a crash modification factor, where, you know, for each of those countermeasures, we have a sense based on best practice of the impact of the investment. So, you know, through the work that we do and prioritizing, you know, our goal is to always look at where can we maximize the benefits with the funding that we have available.
All right, and would you say that meeting our active transportation targets in the transportation master plan would that positively impact perhaps any of the gaps that we see because of the relation between what we see and the impacts of having good active transportation networks and the Vision Zero program?
Through the chair, can you just repeat that question for me?
Sure, I'm just thinking about, because you mentioned there are some funding gaps and I know we are a little bit behind in terms of the transportation targets for active transportation through a TMP. So would, would more funding into active transportation through a TMP positively impact Vision Zero plan, like the plan?
Thank you through the chair. So, yeah, as mentioned, as part of that overall funding, you know, funding amount required to achieve the goals of Vision Zero, we are looking to integrate and align with other capital projects, road renewal projects, sidewalk infrastructure projects, pathway, you know, projects, corridor projects to ensure that the goals identified, you know, maybe individually in Vision Zero align with also some of those bigger projects where we can maximize the use of those funds in the different programs available. So I would say the answer is yes, any kind of, any kind of capital project or program that supports active transportation and the safety of that, you know, that infrastructure, that corridor would lend itself to achieving those goals in Vision Zero.
Fantastic, okay. I'd like to bring forward, add to the amendments, I...
Okay, you want to add to the referral?
Referral, yes, sorry, I'm still working, perfect, okay. So, perfect. So it'd be that administration report back during budget deliberations with funding options to meet the active transportation targets in the transportation master plan with the report to include an analysis of mill rate impacts, alternative revenue tools, and any jurisdictional scan on how other cities fund their networks.
Okay, I'll just look to administration to provide any feedback on that. Go ahead, Mr. Nichol.
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to ask that Ms. Sagan address this as she can because what I originally was looking at here with your referral motion, Counsel Flores, was what specifically you're asking with respect to targets? Was it in a particular year, is it a particular specific sector? So perhaps Ms. Sagan can answer that on admin's behalf.
Through the mayor, so I think what we can do is, in reference with the transportation master plan, bring back what we are doing that is in alignment with that plan and identify any gaps in achieving that plan between what we're doing and what's not there. I think that's what you're asking for. So I think that can be done relatively cleanly and easily. And I think it shouldn't be too much of an issue to bring back some information on what other jurisdictions are doing, if that's the two things I think you're essentially looking for.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, okay. Anything further, Counsel Flores?
Yes. All right, okay. So, related to roads, but other types of transportation now. A question I get often from residents in Ward 6, there is a number of older neighborhoods and what comes often is like, I pay my taxes, why is my road not being fixed? And I understand we're not having discussions about prioritizing specific things, so I just want to be clear, that's not necessarily what I'll be asking for. But it is something that comes up often. So could you briefly walk me through how we currently decide which streets get repaired each year? Is it based purely on the physical conditions of the road or do we consider other factors when we allocate that budget?
Ms. Sagan, go ahead.
Through the mayor. Condition is where we would start the conversation for sure, but there's definitely a number of other factors that go into that. There are a number of policies that exist like Vision Zero, other objectives within the transportation master plan, those all get considered as well. And then in addition to that, we are also looking at all of the other infrastructure in the area, whether that be below ground or other adjacent infrastructure. Because what we don't want to be doing is, because the road is off, is the surface, we don't want to be fixing it and then digging it up later. So we do try to do a full analysis of all the infrastructure in the area, even what development might be happening in the area before we make a decision and that helps to start to indicate what we will do to the road. And then finally, when we're trying to figure out what roads when, we take into consideration where construction's happening, what adjacencies we can accommodate without making it too difficult for a community with too much construction in one area at one time. So all of that gets weighed against each other and leads to how we make some of our decisions.
All right, thank you for that. And does our current method for prioritizing roads and repairs, does it consider neighborhood equity? I'm wondering if we account for factors like whether the area has historically seen less investment or when we create annual paving lists to ensure that all parts of the city. I understand that the current method makes sense, like from an efficiency perspective, but do we consider other, other things we're prioritizing?
So I think we have an awareness of how the construction is distributed throughout the city and to different parts of the area, but I wouldn't say that drives our prioritization. With the limited funds that are available and the different programs, we have to consider where the funding comes from. It doesn't always lend itself to equal distribution to every area. But we do watch and look at like condition ratings in certain areas, make sure that we're trying to keep the whole city in an acceptable condition.
All right, thank you. And then one last thing, I noticed in the plan, we're planning to buy a new pavement management software. That seems like a great tool. Will this new software... Will this new software allow us to include things like equity lenses into it, or is it entirely just the, what other things can we get through this software?
Through the mayor, there's a, there's obviously a number of different tools out there in, in industry. And a lot of it, you can put in what criteria you want to evaluate. Our current tool for managing the condition data that we have is, is a, quite frankly, a very complex spreadsheet, and is something that has limited people that really know how to manage it. And so we're looking to purchase something that's more sustainable and gives us more functionality when planning and prioritizing the locations. Again, that one's based primarily on pavement management and, and the road condition. Again, when we're doing a lot of our planning and our prioritization, we're thinking of more than just the roadway, we're thinking of all the infrastructure in the, in the corridor.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Through the chair, thank you again for all the reports. I think it's important that, you know, we have really, as I've heard from administration, a lot of really efficient ways to do some things. And I look forward to see how we can continue looking at things like investments in active transportation and making sure that we consider how that impacts our community as a whole when we look at our spending in that area. So that's what for me, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our mandatory break. So we will be back at 2:56.
We asked folks to take their seats. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order, so I will go to councillor Froh. Go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Thanks for all this information. In some ways it's probably unfair to administration, right? We ask for all the details and then we bring it high level and bring it back down, but I am going to bring it high level a little bit. One of the things I'm curious about is what administration feels our infrastructure deficit as a community is, or what our deferred maintenance bill might be. And so like I've heard nationally, numbers that range from 150 billion to a trillion. I've heard numbers at a city level ranging from 700 million to a billion, but I've never actually heard from administration. I apologize if that exists in a plan or a document. I've not been able to find it myself. But I am, given that we're talking about capital today and budgeting, I would like to know what we perceive that to be. And based upon this and projected budgets, how are we doing in relation to closing that gap?
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you through the chair. Just for clarification, are you talking about deferred maintenance? Like not what, not construction or infrastructure that's needed for growth, but simply our current assets? And what's required in order to bring them up to?
Yeah, that would be likely the latter. I mean, I think there's two things. One is maintenance, one is capital. Both are quite important and you can look at replacement value, you can look at sort of the maintenance required. I mean, you can use whatever is a best practice or that you use sort of day to day, you'll likely know far better than I. But what I'm interested in is what we assess that to be and based on future years budgeting, how we're doing in relation to that. And I'll have a couple of follow-up questions from that.
Thank you through the chair. So I think it's two years ago, we completed the state of infrastructure report for the city of Regina. It was the first report that was done and we are currently doing an overall asset management plan. I will refer to Ms. Again, again, to give more information on the numbers that were identified at that time and what we have moving forward.
Ms. Again, again, go ahead.
Thank you through the mayor and thanks for enough time to pull it up. So the number of city assets that we have, just as context, we have approximately 12.9 billion dollars worth of assets within the city of Regina. When we did the state of infrastructure report a few years ago, we identified that the infrastructure need was 4.5 billion and that our capital funding was 3.9 billion, so left a gap of 655 million dollars. I don't have enough right now to give you an answer to how our current plan meets that or addresses that, but that's something we could put together or look into if required.
Through the chair, mindful of the requests that are coming, but I am interested in that information particularly as it relates to this discussion today. Can you give me a sense of how much work that would be and the capacity required before I decide whether I'd like to ask for it or not?
Through the mayor, it probably is not a simple task. If not required for a budget, it's certainly something that we will bring forward in our corporate asset management plans as Ms. Bryden spoke to. We are currently doing those in basically by infrastructure type. We're close to completing the plans for, I believe, the water and wastewater. We're currently working on transportation and that's going to take us probably till the end of the year. And then after that, we'll start to get into some of the other infrastructure types such as facilities and parks and so forth. So it's probably over the next two years that those asset management plans are being worked on. I don't have an exact date when we'd bring back the whole package for you, but we could bring back pieces if, in the new year, if that's requested.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, through the chair, I don't have the acumen to go line by line and ascertain whether something is appropriate or not in this budget. Like I simply don't have that expertise, but any layperson can look that if your budget does this, your property tax increase does this, as your deficit is doing this, like we have a problem, right? And what I am interested in knowing is a picture so that we, and through council, we can have discussion with residents about why it is we're requesting a mill rate increase from our residents. And I think certainly within my ward, folks are acutely aware that for several years, that our property taxes did not keep up with the infrastructure requirements in our cities. And so I will leave it to administration's discretion as to what's appropriate as the budget, but I would find very helpful through the chair to have some understanding of this gap, this 650 million dollar gap in relation to, right, how that is growing or shrinking in relation to what our mill rate does. And I think most reasonable people in Regina, when presented with that information, will understand just like they look at how they budget for their homes. So I won't put it on there, but I would ask, within the context of the budget and how we communicate around that, that that will be useful information because I will be asking questions like that at budget. Through the chair, one of the questions I'm regularly asked and I'm inundated with is service requests, much like someone else sort of mentioned before. And I understand the complexity and really appreciate the good work that goes on with understanding the interplay between whether we're paving a road and there's a water main that needs to be fixed. Saying that, one of the things I find quite frustrating and I think that actually erodes the confidence in our civic government is that we can't have conversations with our residents around when we estimate the work to be done. And certainly I, I'm not comfortable with an excuse that we don't want to give an estimate because we might not meet that estimate. We can say within four years or 24 months. And so I guess what I'm looking at here, you mentioned sort of, you're looking at some point for some software or some sort of asset management tools. What do we need to be able to be in a position if someone says, you know, when is this street going to get fixed? Or when is this sidewalks? What do we need as it relates to capital budgeting or tools for staff to be able to say, based upon, you know, our best information and understanding that this can change, this is what we estimate the timelines to be. I'm certainly not comfortable anymore giving really generic answers to residents saying, well, we have these complexities and there's competing priorities. I also, I also understand the really important context that you've given. So I'm wondering if it's a tool, like if it's some resources that staff needs through the chair, what would you need in order to be able to do that? Or is it simply just, you know, we've got an antiquated spreadsheet, we've got a lot to ask and we're just not in a position to, I'm just looking for some help here.
Ms. Bryden.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. So I'm going to kind of start and then I'll refer this one to Karen, Ms. Again, again. But so certainly our integrated planning approach is new. Over, I would say over the last four years that we've been working on how we plan our work and being more integrated and thoughtful about when we're digging up asphalt and sidewalks and such. And so it is in its infancy and we are continuing to add and improve and get better. As for any kind of specifics around what we need to actually specifically say, we estimate within three, four years, I'll refer that to Ms. Again.
Go ahead.
So Ms. Bryden basically outlined exactly what I was going to say, which is that through that process, we're starting to build a better understanding of what our long-range plan is. And with understanding our long-range plan, we can get better at predicting the times that the infrastructure is going to happen. It is taking some time to build that up. I would say we have more confidence in about a two to three-year plan right now, where a year, two years ago, we only had real confidence in a one-year plan. So we are getting there for sure. One thing that council did approve last year was the addition of another resource, which was just added mid-year this year, and that certainly helped giving us some bench strength in that planning process and getting more, like using the tools that we have to produce better information for when things are coming. So it's mostly, I guess what I'm saying is we need time to get there, to have better answers. I certainly hear what you're saying as far as trying to give customers or residents more certainty on what's happening. And we'll certainly take that into consideration, how we can tell them that. We have in the past struggled with telling, giving them a date, and when it doesn't happen or things change, seeking understanding for that is not always easy. So I think that's part of where our caution comes from. But certainly we hear what you're saying and we'll try to provide more information where available.
Well, thank you for that answer and I want to recognize the good work that's being done. I'm okay having hard conversations, including that there is no plan, right? Or you're looking at five years. I think hopefully I've illustrated I'm uncomfortable with not having an answer, but I hear you say if it's correct, you don't need additional funds in this budget. This is more a time thing and learning how the new sort of process works and that's fun for me. I'd like to, through the chair, ask a question about capital carryforward. And certainly this is something councillor Bezo has raised that's of interest to me. I understand sometimes there's very good reasons for capital carryforward and sometimes actually like, not just like good reasons, like we might want some of those things. But in other times, I think people fairly questioned that if you're going to take my money and not spend it, I'd rather have that money myself until you need it. So I'm wondering, as it relates to capital care forward in this budget, but generally at a high level, if you can paint a picture for us as to how we view it, when it should be viewed as a reasonable thing and when it's a challenge for us that we should look to sort of mitigate and reduce.
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you and through the chair, thanks for the question councillor. Obviously a complex issue. Most of the projects that we do, or I should say a lot of them, are multi-year projects. So it's essentially a way for us to properly fund and budget a project. That being said, we need to ensure that we're not sitting on things for an inappropriate amount of time and that when available, we can return that money. Part of our process on an annual basis is to do a review of what's sitting in capital carryforward to see if there is money we can return back to source. We did do that last budgeting cycle, so in March, we returned roughly 10 million back to source that we then used and reutilized to other projects. We can answer specific questions if you have questions about some of the capital carryforward in the list today, but in general, that's what we do. I wouldn't say as somebody new to the city that, you know, it's an inefficient use of funds. I would say it's an efficient way of us funding projects where we aren't constantly chasing funding for things.
That's good. About 30 seconds left.
Through the chair, we have a funding shortfall of 59.26 million dollars, I believe. I think this council, most of us are just under a year being here. I'd like someone to paint a picture for me as to why, right? Like I have a hard time still understanding, we have these incredible master plans and then we always talk about how we're doing and not catching up and I see a disconnect sometimes between these great plans and our budgeting. Can someone walk me through the major factors associated with that 59.26 because I'm going to be asked? And I would like to know how that happens and our role as accountability partners in terms of why that happened.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes, through the chair, thanks for the question. I would say it's a natural part of budgeting. This has happened at every organization I've been at, whether it be private or now into the government sector, is that you typically always have more desire to do things than you have fiscal capacity. So if you think of the way the city is, we're doing all these master plans and in a vacuum, we create, you know, a path forward and it's hard in the moment to relate that back to the overall plan, right? The complexities of the city as a whole really come together at budget time. And again, very much like every organization I've been at, is that you develop plans and go, okay, here's what we would like to do. And then at your strategy building time and your budget time is when you start to make those hard decisions to go, okay, the fiscal capacity isn't there to do everything, so now how do we decide the timing of all the things on these, on the wish list, I'll call it? So I wouldn't say it's a funding shortfall. Obviously, if we could fund everything, that would be great. If the list was smaller than the funding, it would make the job easier. I would say though, it's very normal that you would have a list longer than what you have fiscal capacity for.
Yeah, you got time for one quick comment or question?
How does this funding shortfall, understanding that we're taking the lid off, or whatever the terminology that we're using, how does this compare to previous years? Anyone in administration can take that. Obviously, this is a new process. For me, I appreciate the context that you've given.
Who'd like to speak to that? Mr. Nichol, go ahead.
Budgeting in the municipal sector is particularly challenging. Nobody, everybody understands that. We have limited funds. The reality of the situation is that the public, and I say respectfully, to some extent council members, have an insatiable appetite to have new things and things cost money. And everybody thinks that we can just find it. We have a funding shortfall because the desires, expectations and demands of the public on through to the members of council keep growing. Nobody, I mean, I'm not here to debate, but nobody runs on, I'm going to raise taxes 20%. Those people don't find themselves sitting around the horseshoe. But the reality is when you come to council and you see what we're faced with. So the process that we have used this year, as I've said many times on this floor in the last three or four sessions, is to provide transparent information to members of the public and to you as members of council on how much it costs to run this city in the way that has been previously determined and reflects the demands and expectations of the public. Now, just to put a bit of irony on that, and again, I just, this is just for context, this is who I am. We got a motion last week from the mayor, supported by council, for us to find funding parameters at 6%, 7.5% and a 9% mill rate increase, which will require significant reductions just to get back to that. Then we had a subsequent motion to find a 5% mill rate decrease based on the 2025 base budget. That was Tuesday. And on Wednesday, the discussion focused on how can we have an enhanced snow removal project or program? It's not lost on us that those are very difficult things to reconcile. And I'm not criticizing anybody. I'm just saying that's the way it is. That's what we're faced with every day. It doesn't matter what number you eventually pull out this year in terms of a mill rate increase, there's going to be a sizable chunk of the community who's going to say, what were you thinking? That's way too high. And yet we are reflective and comparable to other cities across Western Canada. Interestingly, and again, I only put this out there for contextual and historical information. Coincidentally, councillor Froh, you represent Ward Three. A former Ward Three councillor, Fred Clippsham, who served many terms on council, every year at budget stood up when council members still had to stand for protocol purposes and said deferred maintenance is deferred taxes and that bail is going to be wrong one of these days. And so again, I say respectfully, things are happening. We have, was it two or three years ago, we had 104-year-old pipe burst on Broad Street and the corner of Broad and 11th. 104 years old. The city is built on a lot of aging infrastructure that we have not kept. built on a lot of aging infrastructure that we have not kept up with. And nowadays, between that and COVID, and the way that supply chains have changed and inflation, everything costs double, triple, or more. And so, I'm not trying to sell a sad story here, Counselor Frow. I'm just trying to give members of council context that this is, it isn't so much that we designed a funding gap. That's just what we're faced with. Because people have expectations, and they have program demands, and they want services. Nobody comes to council and sits at the delegation table and says, please, reduce our service level. Please cut this program. If they have, I've missed it.
Thank you.
Point of clarification, only no comments?
No comments. That's great context. I think the question was, is this, we're not going to call it a funding shortfall, thank you, Mr. Anderson, is this process, given that we've not, because my question was, is this process, given that we haven't been involved in it, and we appreciate being involved in it, is this similar to previous years? That was, that was important context. I agree with you through the chair, but that wasn't my question.
Okay. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you, through the mayor. So yeah, it's not abnormal. So I would say it's very consistent with where we were last year at this time and previous years. Obviously, as the city grows and inflation and stuff, this number will grow. But yeah, this isn't an abnormal year, I guess I'd say. This is the hard decisions that administration's always been tasked to make at this time.
Okay. Counselor Rasevich, go ahead.
Through the chair. Mr. Nickel, thank you for that, just laying things out there. You know, I guess when you talk like that, I just want to say, I think that should all make us think about the priorities of a city. You know, I mean, there's always a wish list. You know, and sometimes you got to cut that wish list back a bit. So anyways, I guess one of my questions off from Counselor Burton earlier, I just had some questions like, in terms of the sweat lodge, because I never knew about this either. I'm just, I guess my question is, did we ever approach the 35 First Nations and Treaty Four to see if they would contribute to the building of this facility? I guess the way I think of it is, we have churches in the city, and we don't fund churches, where people go and worship, or just like going to a sweat lodge, wondering if the First Nations were approached, or would they contribute to helping pay for that and maintaining it? That's a question.
Mr. Nickel, go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor Rasevich. I'm hoping that Ms. Lowe is still on the line.
Ms. Lowe, are you there?
And that she can provide some context.
I'm still here.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, this is true, we don't fund churches, but this isn't, the people who run the churches weren't part of the need for truth and reconciliation and walking down this path.
Okay. So, did we approach any, any people, I guess, the First Nations and Treaty Four to contribute to building this facility?
We haven't even got that far yet.
Could we?
I think it's a very real possibility, yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess, maintenance, who will finance and maintain this, I guess, building, once it's built?
Is that, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, through the chair, as a city facility, we would be responsible for maintaining the facility.
Do we know what that cost would be annually?
Through the chair, I would say probably premature, given we don't, we're not far enough down the path yet of what the facility would look like. But we could put together some estimates.
I mean, I don't know if I need to add that to Counselor Burton's question in terms of asking, you know, the First Nations and Treaty Four contribute, or I don't know if we want to add that, and who would?
Mr. Anderson?
Through the chair. So as it's, you know, saying, listing costs and benefits, I would say we could consider that. I don't know if we need to amend it, but up to you, Counselor.
I guess I'll ask if, Mr. Anderson, you understand the intent, and if that's not going to be naturally included, then I'd probably go to Counselor Burton to just do it as a potential friendly amendment.
Now, through the chair, so up to the counselor, like I said, I hear what you're saying, and I believe we could include that as part of the cost and benefit analysis. But if you wanted to explicitly add it to the point, that's, that's fair.
I just want to make sure that we're asking the question.
Okay. So it sounds like it doesn't need to be explicitly added to look at that. Is that okay with you, Counselor Rasevich? Or do you want it explicitly up there?
I'd like it added.
Okay. And Counselor Burton, would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Okay. I guess, okay.
Yeah, we'll just make sure we get that up first, and I'll go back to you. Counselor Rasevich, just make sure that's, I'm just going to check with you if that covers what you're asking?
Yeah.
And then, Counselor Burton, you're okay with the way it's worded? And to administration, is that clear, based on the conversation? Mr. Anderson?
Through the chair, yeah, that's, it works for us.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
Sorry, Mr. Nickel, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. All I wanted to say was, yes, we can engage with the First Nations to identify potential streams. But this is for them from us. I mean, we've got to be careful that we're not asking the First Nations to fund something to recognize and accept what happened through 150 years of history, and then say, oh, by the way, can you pay for your own recognition and ceremonial space? So we have to be very, very careful in how we approach this with them, because it could, I would dare say, it could be seen to be somewhat insulting to them.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Counselor Rasevich, back to you.
Okay. I guess, you know, looking, and just looking at all this, I guess, the projects and the carryforwards and all, I'm going to, this is all new to me, looking at a spreadsheet like this. So it's not, for me, it's not really clear a lot of times. So I guess I'm just going to kind of pick one out. I was kind of looking at the, gets this number 144, on, I guess, what's that, Appendix E? And I guess there's a carryforward of, so we scan a parkway to Highway One, a loop ramp, 6.29 million, that's a carry, I guess that's a carryforward. So I guess the way I'm reading that is, we're carrying 6.2 million forward. We haven't started that project? Is that right?
Oh, Ms. Sagan, I should have assumed. Go ahead.
Through the mayor. Again, this project was previously planned earlier, or a few years earlier. It is primarily funded through development charges. But given the state of where our development charges are, we deferred some projects. So again, the money that's, the dollars that you see identified are primarily all development charges funded. So it's money we haven't received anyways from development charges, and we're not spending it. So it's not taking debt, in other words. So it's, and we've pushed it off to 2027, when we think it's more appropriate for it to be built or the development charges to be used.
Okay. So we have 6.2 million, we're carrying that forward?
I think, I think Mr. Anderson was going to speak to that as well. Go ahead.
Yes, thanks, through the chair. So just to clarify, while this is being held there, we have a negative deferred revenue item on our balance sheet that offsets this. So this isn't cash we've collected from the developers that's sitting there being unused. We've actually haven't collected enough cash from developers, so we put this project on pause. So it's, it's an accounting complexity that helps us manage our projects. But I think what you're asking is, have we collected money from a resident or a developer, and we're sitting on it? The answer is no. In this case, we've actually not collected enough money, so we've put the project on pause.
Okay, so I guess.
Hopefully, that helps.
Okay. So what I'm reading these things, it says here, capital carry for 2025. When I look at that entire column, and there's all these, all these numbers for all these projects, is, so this is 6.29, we don't have that money?
Through the chair, for this specific item, correct. So it's an accounting entry to hold, because we had plans and put in the budget to do that project. But the funding for it hasn't materialized yet. It's taking longer to collect on the development charges than we had in our model. Therefore, we paused the work. But we still have the placeholder there, so that we, when the undevelopment and the deferred revenue gets back into a revenue-neutral position, we will then have the money to spend on it. It's complex accounting.
Yeah.
But, but hopefully, you can understand how all those moving parts go.
So each one of these capital carryforwards for 2025, some have money there and some don't.
Through the chair, correct, correct. So that's complexity of us trying to keep track of doing all of these major projects.
I mean, it makes it really hard for, I don't know, it makes it hard for me personally, anyways. You can't speak for anybody else, but it's like, well, yeah, yeah. It makes it pretty difficult to, because in my thinking, I was like, okay, well, I know that area. It's pretty much, I think, yeah, it's in my ward. I'm like, you know, something like that could be put off for, for a substantial amount of time, till there's other development in the area. This is me talking, me thinking, right? You know, I'm thinking, oh, because if we were talking about trying to save money, well, I was thinking, oh, there's 6.2 million we could defer for a couple more years, till there's more development out in that area. But obviously, we don't even have the 6.29 million. So, hmm. Okay. So that makes it really difficult to even look at any of these numbers, for me, anyways. I don't know what everybody, how everybody else thinks, because that just kind of, kind of pulls a rug from underneath my feet, I'll say that. It's like, huh, okay, I guess that money's not there. That's confusing a little bit. But I guess I have to sit down with you more, Mr. Anderson, and get, I guess, get educated.
Through the chair, my door is always open.
How to read these, how to read some of these sheets, yeah. Okay. I guess, you guys mentioned Colliers, you know, with the, and then you mentioned master plans. And I guess my, part of my thinking was, and I've always thought this, how these master plans kind of direct administration on what we need to do. But sometimes, in my mind, I'm thinking about some of these master plans maybe need to be changed. Maybe we need to start looking at those and maybe make some changes, so that you're not being pushed or directed in a certain way, you know, because maybe some of them are unsustainable to do for us. Maybe we're going to more needs or wants, like Mr. Nickel was talking about, like, we want everything. Well, you know what, we got to pull, rein those things in, some of these master plans, so that we're not doing certain things. I guess, just to make a comment, that I, or if you guys want to respond to the fact that Colliers is looking at these master plans, and sometimes, there are certain components of it are necessary. I mean, that's what I would say. I got, my example would be maybe the transit plan. Like, I just look on here, in terms of the amount of money we're spending in fleet, in transit, in buses, you know what, maybe we buy three less buses, $3 million less, certain routes get shortened, and that's a way to save, I mean, just, I'm talking incremental savings as we move along. But if it's being driven by master plans, are those things we need to modify for Colliers or for administration to make different decisions?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, through the chair. So yeah, we obviously have to, you know, those master plans come to council on a regular basis to get approved.
Yeah.
So their council-approved master plans on the direction that council wants the city to move in. And council has every right to change those plans when they come up for renewal. They are a lot of work, and they're very complex. But they come at a regular pace. And I don't know if someone wants to speak to how often we bring the master plans to council, but.
Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. I think, in general, the master plans come up for review every five years. I know some of the major infrastructure master plans are going to be coming up for review. Once we finalize the growth plan, we're going to work through, you know, the water and wastewater master plans. I'm not sure on the transit master plan, when it's specifically coming forward, or the fire master plan. But I think they all have review dates of about five years.
Good luck. 45 seconds left.
Okay. Yeah, I just, we'll do that, then I guess, I'm just thinking for a sec. Yeah. And I guess, you commented on the $55 million shortfall, and we talked about how that, how that happens. And obviously, a lot of, some of those things are like, they're wants, they aren't needs. But they become needs maybe in the longer term. But I guess those are some of the things that maybe where we need to look at and find those reductions. And because I, what I noticed in this, sorry, in here, there's, I guess, maintain, and then there's enhance. So those are the places maybe where we got to make some, I guess, look at cuts, in terms of not as much enhancement, or optimal, I guess, is the other word. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Zakidniak, go ahead.
And I'm just getting started. So my first question is, in relation to Colliers, is developing this prioritization, are they developing that, sort of like, for, like a bespoke model for us? Or are they utilizing existing models, like, are there existing prioritization models? This is, it sounds like this is the first time this is happening for us. So how is, like, what models are they using to develop their prioritization methodology?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, so through the chair. So using the CPAC, so our CPAC committee had an existing methodology where we did a review and sort of a rating system in the past.
Sorry, what's CPAC?
It's our internal, I forget, capital?
Capital Projects Advisory Committee.
Capital Projects Advisory Committee. So it's an internal committee of senior leaders that, you know, would develop these lists. And then we would come together and have a process where we would rank and scale them, and then have an ability for administration to then decide what gets funded at what time. What we've done is, we've asked Colliers to come in and basically say, okay, we're looking for outside guidance here to see if we can improve that process. And we went to them, given, as my colleague, Mr. May, had said, their backgrounds and expertise in the field, to say, how is, how is it best for us to do this process?
And then, so is this like a one-off, that they're giving us their suggestions for improvements, and then we will take that moving forward? Or is the idea to continue engaging with them?
Through the chair, I'd say the plan right now is more of a one-off, to get them to, you know, have us review our process, implement a new process, and we'll start using that going forward.
Okay. So my next question is, so Appendix G is describing its project descriptions. And so, a line item is community spaces and partnership. So it looks like to me this is annual funding to develop community spaces, such as multipurpose room renovation, whatever. And I think for this year, it's, or for 2026, it's proposed to be utilized on the Harbor Landing School, if I remember correctly. Do you need help? Do you need me to repeat where it is?
No, keep going, Counselor.
Okay. So I'm just, is that the case? Do we, every year, we have money for community spaces and partnership, and 2026 is earmarked for Harbor Landing? And also, how does that funding get allocated each year?
Ms. Bryden?
Thank you, through the chair. So the funding for the Harbor Landing community space was included in previous years. The funding that is in the plan right now is for the proposed space within the Southeast Fire Hall.
Okay. And then, so that's for 2026? Is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And then, how does it get decided? Is it just based on where there's an opportunity, as in Harbor Landing and the Fire Hall, for an enhanced community space, or a renovation?
There, thank you, through the chair. So there is no annual allocation for community spaces.
Okay.
These are These opportunities came forward in areas that were considered a higher needs or higher priority for areas where there was no existing community space available.
Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to ask about the digital engagement platform. So that's explained in Appendix X, sorry, H, I believe. No, I don't see it. So. So what I remember reading about it is, it sounds like, oh yes, it, it is on Appendix, Appendix H. It sounds like our current term is expiring in 2025. So what I'm wondering is, is this just to replace, to get a new like format for Be Heard? Or are we looking at expanding or doing something different? So that's what I wanted to understand with that one.
Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. You are correct, Be Heard is the city's digital engagement platform and the system was acquired in 2019. The current term is set to expire in 2025. We have confirmed and renewed it for a one-year term for 2026. However, in 2027, we're exploring what our options are in terms of procuring new or if we can continue to use a service much like the current platform. The capital investment amount is a placeholder depending on what the results of the RFP are. If we are able to return, retain a service solution much like Be Heard, it could be lower costs.
So are we looking to replicate it or are we wondering if, you know, is, is this, do we know if it's, if that's what we want or if we're looking for something different?
Thank you, through the chair. We'll do that scoping in the next year now that we've confirmed we're able to renew for a one-year term. But I think from my understanding, my experience and my team's experience, I think we're pretty happy with the current platform. So we'll be looking for something similar.
Okay, I wanted more clarity about the RPS renovations, campus facility solution. I think what I, in the presentation that Mr. May had given, I thought it said that that wasn't going ahead in 2026. So, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I just wanted to understand. I believe part of that was maybe deferred from 2025, so I just wanted to understand where, where that's at.
Mr. Anderson, go ahead. Thank you, and through the chairs, yeah, in relation to RPS, so there's, the physical building facilities are the responsibility of the city. So those would be on the city budget. In addition to that, RPS has different buckets of capital items that they come forward with that last year totaled 8.5 million. So we were just putting aside 8.5 million as a placeholder for the RPS-specific items that they will bring forward when they bring the budget, their budget to council. But the, their facility and their renovations has been a city-led and a city responsibility, not a RPS responsibility.
So it's a placeholder though, like it is, it is in there as a placeholder?
Correct, so through the chair, right now in our forecast, we have $79 million of capital contributions. So when we prepared this report, we said, well, part of that has to go to police. We set aside 8.5 million to go to police based on what they did last year, because we don't know what their ask for this year is. Hopefully that provides clarity.
Sure, yeah. So there are some items in the budget that have, and I do have examples, like capital carryforward, but they're not, there's nothing allocated in 2026 or 2027. And so would that be an example of something that we're just trying to plan longer term for? And we just, we have some capital carryforward, but it's for sometime in the future?
Through the chair, so it can be for that, I would say, or it can be like the example Counselor Asenich brought up, where we've paused a project because the funding, you know, we're sort of borrowing against ourselves in another pocket. So we're holding and putting the project on hold because we're short funding somewhere else.
Okay, I wanted to ask about the baseball stadium capital investment. I understand, I was there last term about that motion. So because of that motion, administration is now sort of required to set aside whatever funding was earmarked in that motion because that motion passed and the requirements were met. Is that accurate?
Okay, Ms. Braden.
Thank you, through the chair, that's correct.
If this council wished to revisit that, what would be the process for that?
I can ask the acting city clerk to speak to that.
Through you, Mayor, reconsideration motion would be required by council to reconsider that decision.
And would that need to happen then prior to the 2026 budget finalization?
Through you, Chair, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Now. Sorry, my mouse isn't working. I'm worried that you're counting my time and I'm going to run out.
Yeah, but one minute, I'll wait until your mouse works.
Please do. Stress, stressing me out. No, it doesn't. Mayor Bishinsky, you are stressing me out right now, through the chair, yourself. Let's see. She was laughing at me. So, community plan studies is something that, no, that's an example of where there's capital carryforward. What about the digital modernization of planning and development service? So there is something allocated in the budget in 2026 for that? And I was just looking for some more information about what that's, what's, what that refers to.
Ms. Braden, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. So there is some work that we would like to do on our front-facing information for planning and development, which would provide more timely and accurate information for residents and developers on our systems. So this is work that we are moving forward with in 2026.
And how much, how much is, is set aside for that? It says 0.35, and so that means. Do you know?
Thank you, through the chair. I believe Ms. Dawson is not online, but I, I think that's around 350,000, although I do.
I see it, it's in Appendix E on page three and it says 0.35. I think you're right that, like, the way that's intended to be 350,000, yes? But so, isn't that in the list of things that are not like competing? I, I don't know how you put it, Mr. May, but like in the queue of things to be prioritized? Like not necessarily 100% going ahead, but to be prioritized? Just to make sure I understand.
Yeah, thank you, through the chair. So that would have been, that would be funded through the reserve. But also, yes, that is still for consideration. This is work that we consider important, but I don't know where it'll play out in terms of the big picture.
But you said it'll be funded through the reserve.
That's correct.
Okay. More, I was looking for more information about the living snow fence. Like this sounds very exciting to me. I've talked to many residents about snow fences. It's not in the budget for 2026, it is for 2027. I want to understand the next time someone calls me about a snow fence, what we're thinking about doing in relation to snow fences.
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
I will start and then ask Mr. Warren to assist and perhaps Mr. Eric behind me. But we've done a fair bit of work in the past where we've determined that, you know, the old-fashioned snow fence that we may know from our childhood days is not the most effective or efficient way to do it. You have to put it up, it gets damaged over the winter and then you have to take it down in the spring. So we've done some work on that and I'll let Mr. Warren talk about what potentially we could be doing in the future with a living snow fence.
Thank you, through the chair. So I, you know, I think since 2017, when we, when we ceased the use of snow fence through budget reduction exercises and started to use snow ridging as, as a method to help maintain roadways, help maintain and minimize some of the drifting snow and blowing snow that, that creates blocked roads in some of those, you know, perimeter areas or, or locations that are adjacent to open spaces. It's something that we've been doing for the last number of years and, and, you know, from, from the perspective of that work, it works well. However, that said, it is, you know, it, it's, it requires resources and it requires dollars to do that work. So, you know, we've, we've constantly received questions and comments about the use of expanding snow fence or mitigating strategies. And one of the things that we, we came across when looking at best practice is potential use of, of a living snow fence. So essentially installing, you know, trees or shrubs in strategic locations to act as that windbreak naturally. As part of that work and, and our team is working closely with the Parks and Open Space Group as well to identify the, you know, the, the right type of tree and the, the watering schedule, the maintenance required. Through that analysis, we have, we have found that it is fairly expensive. It is exponentially more expensive than snow ridging on an annual basis. So, but it is something that we wanted to ensure that we're exploring and put forward for consideration of this, with this budget process due to some of the interest that we've received on that.
Okay.
Ten seconds left.
Okay, and, and it is accurate that that funding allocation though is not till 2026?
Yes, so through the chair, the, the business case that we put forward, we didn't feel that we would be in a position to start that work in 2026. So the goal would be to work through the details, the process and implement the pilot project in 2027.
Standards review. You made me say it really fast.
Say, say it again really fast.
So this is, uh, page six of Appendix H. I'm just looking for more information about the infrastructure design and construction standards review. So like, I know it's a full-size review, design standards, construction specifics, but like just a bit more information on that.
Ms. Braden.
Thank you, through the chair. As you've heard me talk before, we do have design standards and we set design standards working with our operational teams. And then, so it might be street width, for example, streets, residential roads are, right now the design standard is 18 meters. And that allows for proper snow removal, parking, et cetera, et cetera. So we also make those public, so developers are well aware of what those design standards are so that when they're building new neighborhoods and communities, they know how to design them to meet those design standards. So this work is a full review of our design standards. And I don't know if I have any more to add to that. Through the chair, yes, it's future years.
Okay, I'll go to Counselor Sikles, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Number one, may God bless and protect Jim. Mr. Nickel, that was amazing and something that we need to hear maybe every day. And I will be reviewing the video later and capturing it all for posterity. Number two. Is it easier for, it, it would be easier to review this if it wasn't so jumping around between, we talked about this during the break, is, is there a possibility that by next year, this will be in a different format, a little easier to read?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead. Through the chairs, yeah, we can take feedback in for when we do this next year. If there's a format that you would find easier, we can take that in consideration for sure.
Yeah, as long as it's not a big make-work project. If it ties into some of your software purchases, then that'd be great. This one is for our roadworks people. Can you, for the sake of people watching and the rest of us, tell us what the distance of the roads and sidewalks is that we redo annually?
Mr. Warren, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. So in any given year, the, the road budget for capital investment, it, it goes up and down. But based on averages and, and the, and the average budget we receive, we typically renew about 25 to 30 kilometers of roads every year and then we renew about 15 to 20 kilometers of sidewalks every year through those capital budgets.
Thank you very much. I had attended Clark Bezos' coffee talk on Saturday and, and ran into a resident who said to me, he's had enough, he's leaving Regina for better taxes. Now, that's not the first time any of us has heard that. I've heard that from a couple people in my neighborhoods as well. So what that leads me to think is, number one, the great presentation that we got from our CFO and the constant updates from both the province and the city on how we have one of the least expensive places to live in the country. So in terms of trying to have some more data and some more justification to show people that they may be walking into a trap somewhere else, can we graphically represent this data and then find contrasting data from our competitor cities?
Mr. Anderson, go ahead. Through the chairs, appreciate the question, Counselor. We're definitely working on that through our different projects we have going on right now. And so I would say that we're aligned in that goal.
Okay, thank you. And the last one is, when, when was the last time, and maybe this was asked, so I apologize if I missed this. When was the last time our almost $13 billion of assets were valued? Such as City Hall, the buildings at Real, arenas, et cetera?
Ms. Braden, go ahead.
Thank you, through the chair. So I believe the, the work that was done for the. Asset, now I can't think of it. Asset, Jamie, do you want to speak to it? Mr. Hanson?
Ms. Sagan, or Mr. Ha, sorry.
Through the mayor. Report was done in 2022. So that was the last time I think we gathered all of the information comprehensively as a city. Of course, through the master plans and different presentations you see from the respective service areas, that information has been updated probably since then. As we bring forward the corporate asset management plans, that information again will be updated more holistically from a corporate perspective and give you a, a picture of what the, the whole city perspective is.
I'd like to have a picture of that and I don't know how my colleagues feel. Again, not a make-work project, but I think it would be important for us to see a list of all of our major buildings and, and their value and, and the date that they were valued. Not suggesting a sell-off, don't get excited, just want to know the value.
Mr. Schisler?
Through the, I'll start and then Mr. Hanson will give you the actual answer. Through the chair, so specific to buildings, facilities that the city owns and operates, there is a facilities asset management report that was provided. Actually, council received this in the email since the last time we met. So there is information, that last report, the latest, greatest version of that report is 2021, I believe, 2022, March of '22. But I'll ask, Mr. Hanson probably has some additional context to, to put into that, but it's value, you know, all, all those types of things about our, our facilities are contained in that report and it's, it is in your inbox if you haven't got to yet.
I haven't seen it, great.
Mr. Hanson, I think he's going to comment for you.
Sure.
Yes, through the mayor. The, the master plan that was shared with you is our corporate facilities master plan that identifies the value and size, condition of, of all of our facilities. We do review the replacement value of those facilities on an annual basis and we can provide you with that information. The, the total city-owned facility assets are just around $900 million in value currently. And we've been working with Real on the replacement value and the condition of, of their assets. And I believe they have up-to-date information on, on those assets as well.
Okay, well, that's interesting and helpful. Thank you very much. Thank you, through the chair, done.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Radins, go ahead.
I'm just going to come back to the Sweat Lodge.
I'm just gonna come back to the sweat lodge and the additional information. I'm gonna put forward a friendly amendment. And so it's questions around, because I was a little bit confused when you folks were talking about well-being of indigenous folks in our community, as well as I was confused about the Parks and Rec master plan or it falls under. And so the question is, federal, is there federal grants or provincial grants available as well? Because I I feel like feds are responsible for treaty rights. SHA is also for province that deals with mental health. And so the third point to that would be, is it accessible? The sweat lodge is 20 kilometers out of the city. Do we have accessible transit or to for folks to get there? I mean, people suffering with mental health and addictions may not have the ability to get 20 kilometer, 20 kilometers outside of the city. So I would like the amendment, if you can put that up, a friendly amendment, if it's agreeable to Counselor Burton and Counselor Turnbull.
Okay, so we'll put it as point number three, just as just to be able to read it. And then I'll ask Counselor Burton first to see if this is something that you would want added to yours, or it can also be left as a separate item. I'll let you read that Sir, I'll get you to say it into the mic.
Sir, all these, yes.
Okay. Okay, so Counselor Burton says it's all good to include that as part of his referral there. So go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so second item is the Parkdale Park revitalization. What item is that? And I like lose my spot here. Okay, so that would be as another amendment or addition to is additional information on the Parkdale Park revitalization and skating loop project. Can you?
Okay, let's see. Admin, do you have any comments on that one? Ms. Bryden?
Thank you. Through the chair. No, we we can certainly provide that information.
Okay. And I just want to double check, too. I forgot to ask about the other referral. Is there any concerns about the other amendment to Counselor Burton's?
Thank you. Through the chair. I just wanted to highlight that the work with other levels of government for funding for the ceremonial site is already underway. I could also add that through the work to determine the location of the ceremonial site, there was a lot of consultation with the indigenous community and groups and our advisory, elders' advisory. So I would add, in terms of accessibility, I don't know if if Ms. Lowe has any comments to add.
Ms. Lowe?
I would, thanks, Ms. Bryden. Through the chair, I would just add that there's like, when we talk about programming and what's gonna happen on that site, we can certainly look at what the potential to have transit charters or something to make sure that people can get out there as a possibility. But that's something that comes with the build-out of the plan and when we know or how we know what programming will take place out there.
Okay.
Okay. So I'd like to have the third item for additional information on the rail yards plan and the baseball stadium commitment. Because as it stands, like, there is not a lot of information on there, so just wanted to know what the status of that is currently.
Okay, anything Admin wants to speak to on that one, or is that a update that can be brought back?
In terms of the baseball stadium commitment, I think we can certainly provide more information at that time. And then I'll let Mr. Anderson speak to the rail yard.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Through the chair, yeah. Right now, the rail yards, we're just developing an RFP to go out to RFQ and an RFP to go out to the market to get feedback on what the market would like to do with those plans. So all we're doing is is putting out RFQs and RFPs at this point.
Okay. And so last point is additional information on permanent elections office space compared to other municipalities our size. And so I guess in terms of what is the usual practice prior to election, like, are we talking a year out? Because I noticed on here, it's only allotted, the funding is at 1.1 million for 2027. And so how far out do we need to prepare for the election?
I'll ask the acting city clerk to speak to that one.
Through you, Chair. So first of all, we're happy to report back on on the additional information that you're looking for. We have a very unique opportunity here that the space that we're looking at wanting to utilize as a permanent space is owned by the city of Regina. So it takes away from those leasing costs that we would have to pay like we have in previous years when we find a temporary space. This is something that we have been trying to find for some time, because when the city has to have a referendum or we have to conduct by-elections, it's really hard to find space rather quickly. The project cost for capital cost that's noted in here, this is so that we can ensure that the space is accessible. And we need to put in an accessible lift as well as an accessible washroom in that space. And that's what that cost would be to cover that. This isn't something that we would necessarily need to do in 2016. We could do it in 2027, or even in, well, we wouldn't want to do it in 2028 because that is the year of the election. But we are trying to do some of these things in preparation for the general election, and we are trying to offset some of the costs. So it's not like there's like a large cost in the year of the actual election, in addition to some of the general election expenses that we have in the election year. So.
And I think that is it for me.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll take our second mandatory break, and we'll be back at 4:23 sharp.
Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And we'll go to get folks to take their seats. I will go to Councilor Turnbull, go ahead.
All right, thank you to the Chair. Thank you for the in-depth explanation. A lot of my questions have been answered, so we'll see how quick I can be, which is a hard task. I do want to compliment our city and our staff on a couple things. I have seen the work on the facility condition indexes with, in terms, at our city and at Realon is a work in progress to get that information and then to start prioritizing things. I know George was talking about that, but it's really encouraging to see that being done and the efficiencies built out of that. Also, I wanted to applaud our city administration on working on this prioritization plan along with Coilers, and I think that will go a long way to help us make these decisions and making sure that our projects are being aligned to our strategic values. And I think that will go a long way with really this determination and these hard decisions. So I really appreciate that. So on that note, I do have some referral motions, which I'll get pulled up. The first one actually relates to that capital planning prioritization, which is provide the ranked prioritization list for 2026 spending, including contextual notes and methodology to explain the demonstrated need aligning to strategic values, master plans, existing facility condition index, et cetera, which is pretty much the work administration has said there are on the way of doing. And then I also have provide information on the following processes, which is that A, average cost per construction consulting fees and breakdown of internal versus external costs; B, information on capital project idealization and the comparison of how many projects are designed but not built. And I put a definition of not built as delayed past five years; the procurement process, which is RFP, RFQ for consultants; and a summary of the existing process map slash flowchart of capital project initiation, planning to execution.
Kate, will maybe start just with the first one, get that on screen. So I'll just go to administration. Any comments or clarification on this request for information? For point number six, Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you through the Chair. For point number six, we can share where we end up with through the Coilers process.
Okay, and then point number seven, we'd like to speak to that. Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Yes, thank you through the Chair. I think that this work can, we can provide this information to a degree with the budget work.
Okay, very good. Back to you, Councilor Turnbull.
Sorry, point of clarification. Through the Chair. And I can wait until later. When would be appropriate to ask about number six? When would that be appropriate for me? When she's done before we vote?
I'll ask the acting city clerk just to speak to the process. Go ahead.
Through you, Chair. Technically, Councilor Farrow, you've already used up your five minutes for the meeting to speak, so unless you had a point of clarification on point number six...
I don't know what the terminology is. I don't know what it means or what it's in relation to, so I don't know what I'd be voting on, sorry.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, you can clarify for sure. Thank you.
So that is just that for the capital planning list, so we have a list of the capital projects. I'm just, the presentation, they showed us the two processes they already do. So they currently have this CPAC, which makes, like, the administration made the prioritized list. But this year, they're moving to Coilers to make the prioritized list in the capital planning process. And so when they make the capital planning process, they will actually rank the projects based on our strategic goals and initiatives. So I'm just asking administration and their consultants to show us the result of their prioritization of the capital projects based on all of the information that goes into it. And I guess I could ask administration, they might be able to answer that better than me, too.
Councilor Farrow, is that, you're good with that? Okay. Kate, back to you, Councilor Turnbull.
Yep. So those are my questions, and then I also wanted to ask a couple questions. Are the projects that we delayed with the pool projects still on this list, or are they just shown with no funding? How did that work?
We'd like to take that one. Mr. Anderson, go ahead.
Through the Chair, sorry, can you clarify?
So when we took, when we delayed some projects, when we voted on the indoor aquatic facility, we took $30 million out of the budget, and those projects are here. I was just wondering if that a lot of dollar amount is showing on here, or if they've been accounted for in that process.
Through the Chair, that would be an appendix C?
Yep. Thank you. And then I was interested, because it was intriguing to me, there was a line item under enhanced that said permanent paint marking program, and I just wanted to ask what that was in relation to.
Who would like to take that one? Mr. Warren, go ahead.
Thank you through the Chair. So in previous capital budgets and previous construction seasons, we, when we renew the road as part of our asset, I guess, as part of our, as part of the project, we would install a permanent pavement marking, which is basically like a thermal plastic inlaid into the asphalt. And the rationale behind that is that it is a, it's a product that lasts up to eight to 10 years as opposed to less than a year when it comes to our regular paint program. So in some of our major roads, and especially Ring Road and our expressways, the goal is to install the thermal plastic so that we don't have to continuously be going back and refreshing those pavement markings. And that's something that has been typically funded by the major road budget. However, with, excuse me, in this year, we wanted to pull that out and show it on its own, so we accounted for that on its own line item as opposed to having it embedded in the major road budget.
And to the Chair, will you have some savings in not having to go back and doing it constantly?
Through the Chair, so those savings, so we've been doing this work for many, many years, and so those savings are already embedded in our current maintenance program.
Perfect. Okay, and then to the Chair, I also wanted to ask about the infrastructure, or talk about the infrastructure design construction standards review. Mostly, I wanted to stress the importance of that, because the infrastructure design standards would identify efficiencies, it would align us to our sustainability goals, it would align us to our accessibility goals. And to me, when I look at all those projects, I think that's almost the most important one, because if we are able to change our standards to reflect our principles, we are actually doing things the right way sooner and then can save us things. So I just really want, I know that there's no funding allotted to it now, but I do believe there's a lot of merit in doing our infrastructure design standards review, because it has the ability to affect all of our projects going forward, and I just want to allow you the ability to speak to that.
Any comments from admin on that? Ms. Bryden, go ahead.
Thank you through the Chair. I have no further comment. We do understand the importance of our design standards. Again, we look at what we've already built and how we can support the future better and collaborating with our operational partners.
Well, I think that's it. I think I did it in less than five minutes.
Thank you, Councilor Turnbull. Councilor Manzonielli, go ahead.
Thank you, through the Chair. First thing I'm looking for a bit of information on is the $4 million towards the police headquarters second floor renovation. I'm just looking for some clarification. I think that used to be closer to 2.3.
Sorry, who is that?
I just wanted to clarify, there's two lines there. One has, I think, when we were talking about before, one's sort of no carryforward, no budget in '26, no budget in '27. This is the other line. So when Councilor Kinneyak was asking those questions, and we were, so thank you for asking that, because it gives an opportunity to explain that there is still plans and budgets for that second floor, and Mr. Hanson has those details.
Okay, Mr. Hanson, go ahead.
Yes, through the Mayor, this is a project that council approved the design funding in 2025, and we're underway in the detailed design for renovations to the second floor at RPS headquarters. This is the original headquarters facility, and these renovations will allow us to make use of some underutilized space and bring some operational units back to campus that are currently in lease spaces. So it will provide lease savings going forward once we bring those units back and operational efficiencies on RPS's side of things.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Just, because I remember this from the previous budget when it first showed up, if I remember, originally, they were paying something like a million dollars worth of lease rates. That second floor renovation at the time was about a $2 million renovation. It was about three or four years ago, so their worry was that they wouldn't finish the renovation as they had all the trades at their disposal for the whole project, and prices would go up if they didn't get the ability to tail that, tail end that onto the renovation. So I guess my first question is, I see, if my memory serves me correct, it went from about a $2, $2.3 million estimate to a $4 million estimate. Does that mean that that window of tail ending that renovation has closed, and that's why the price hopped, or is this just an adjustment factor? I'm just wondering if circumstance changed, first part of the question.
Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, through the Mayor, I believe the majority of this was just in, through refining the scope of what was required in terms of renovations in order to ensure we had adequate space to bring those operational units back. So there's likely some additional scope and some inflationary factor in order to ensure we can close out those leases and bring these units back.
Okay. My follow-up to that is just trying to understand the budget document this year as it's presented, like, C0523, which is line item 25, presents as $4 million in the current year, but nothing in the next year. If I look at line item 27, which is J1229, office space renovations, I see a $2.5 million ask with nothing next year. I think that, like, in the office space renovations, to me, that seems like it might be a necessary investment at all times from the city, and that might be somewhat of a placeholder that never quite gets invested and fulfilled, but kind of goes forward. Am I misreading that, or is there an actual project there?
Mr. Hanson?
Yes, through the Mayor, the office space renovations line was originally intended to be an ongoing annual program, but due to prioritization and fiscal constraints, it's been reduced to every two or three years, we might do a more significant office renovation. So this funding earmarked in 2026 is for renovation of a floor at City Hall to address infrastructure and space efficiencies similar to the RPS second floor project.
Okay. Okay, 25, 27. Another one I got there is that new salt and storage facility, line item number 37, new project number 158. I note that one facility in the reports built already to replace a previous facility, and then it talks about another one being needed to meet the long-term needs. And both of those come with the spend, and I'm just wondering, is this the current spend, or is this the anticipated spend for the long-term need?
Mr. Warren? Mr. Hanson?
Yes, through the Mayor, this is the new facility, so this is the additional spend for additional expansion to accommodate the full requirements of salt and sand storage. So it's in addition to the new build that we recently completed.
Okay, yeah, so this would be the one to meet the long-term needs necessary, is how they worded it?
Yes, that's correct.
When we had our council meeting a month ago, there was a stay of builder report, two of them were kind of tied together. I had made an amendment, a motion about reducing the amount of poured concrete. I had asked that we had an idea of reducing the poured concrete budget by 20%, what that would equate to in dollars, if we could have an idea of that dollar number by this, these meetings. I was just wondering if there was any chance that that dollar value was figured out?
Mr. Doni, go ahead.
Through the Chair, so, you know, the full report is planned to come forward in Q1.26, but if we look at the overall road network, we worked out, yes, 15 million was the total, and we were, you know, I'm going to go to Ms. Siggin, if she's got that handy, but hold on with us, we've got... if she's got that handy, but hold on, hold on with us, we've got it handy, we just got to find it. Okay, yeah, so approximately $15 million spend in Serp and residential road, and about 20% of that, so around $3 million is what we're looking at for potential in the future. Of course, there's lots of big decisions that would have to be made, particularly around reducing the number of sidewalks. So if we're going from sidewalk on each side of residential road down to one sidewalk, but that's the, the overall magnitude of costs that we're talking about from a savings perspective.
Appreciate that. Yes, just a couple of comments. That 20% reduction was a big deal to me. Talking about reductions in a city is tricky to do. I'll note that we had a delegate appear today and talked about the need for multimodal transportation. They talked about the problems with integrating multimodal with vehicular traffic. And part of it was trying to figure out where to make it fit and where to get the money from. So a big piece of my movement of that 20% reduction in poured concrete was that's the exact problem I'm staring at. How do we make all these different users from parking to drivers to cyclists to pedestrians fit onto our roadways and all use them in the way they need on the same surface? We can't all use Albert Street. So that $3 million we're talking about is the residential portion where I think the parallel multimodal transportation network needs to go. And I think it needs to be funded by rethinking how we build our inner-city neighborhoods. And I think there might be future, a little bit of snow clearing money to make sure we have accessibility and able to properly look after and maintain, because you know, you have to give up a little bit to get a little bit. The reason I'm talking about this right now is because I hope to have those numbers relevant for this budget, because I think it's a relevant debate to have. But I don't think there's a hope. I know all the reports administration has to go through on top of the big deal we made about that other one with the big reduction back to the 2025 budget numbers. I'm just really hoping in Q1 of 2026, we can have a really good conversation about this. Those are real numbers. That's a real product that we put down. We are rebuilding like-for-like out of habit in our city. Like I said, we had delegates talk about the need for the space. As we sit through these past five meetings, we all see there's not a lot of room in the numbers. So like I said, sometimes you have to give a little to get a little. That's $3 million a year, each and every year we go into putting sidewalks down to cut up and replace and do what we do. That could be the space for our multimodal transportation, that could be the funding to fund it, and that could be the funding for the proper sidewalk snow removal, not just moving around. We need to get to be a true intercity and have what we talked about in these meetings. So I just really wanted to lobby for thought into what was going on there and where it was coming from. Thank you for all the information you guys put together for these meetings. I appreciate all the work you're going to have to go through for all the requests we have, but it's a big budget, and thanks for the work.
Thank you, Counselor Mansonelli. Okay, with that, because we have a referral on the screen, it will go straight to vote. So I will ask the clerk to start the vote on the receivable referral motion as presented.
Through you, Mayor. The referral motion is carried unanimously with all members present voting in favor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Counselor Flores and a secondar, Counselor Siquegan, the opposed, and carried. Oh, I didn't see there, Counselor Fro, sorry, too late.